Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the December 1st, 2020 Glendale City Council Meeting. Due to evolving situation with COVID-19 and health recommendations from LA County Health Department, the Glendale City Council Meeting will be available to the public electronically. Due to social distancing requirements, the public will not be able to attend the meeting. This meeting can be viewed on local cable spectrum and charter cable channel 6 and AT&amp;T Ubers Channel 99. You may also stream online through our website, www.glandelca.gov, by scrolling all the way to the bottom of the webpage and selecting "Live Streaming," which is the third icon from the left. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100, which is on the screen. Please do not call in advance of the agenda item. With this being said, may I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Brotman?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Kasakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Agajanian?
Present. Thank you, Mr. Najarian. I will lead the flag salute. Please join me in the flag salute.
Father, we first give thanks for the blessings that you have bestowed upon this community and ask that you keep us embraced in your care. Grant our council wisdom and compassion as they conduct the business of this great city and let their decisions be in accordance to your plan. Finally, we pray for the safety of those on the front lines of fighting this pandemic, and we pray for our city's health. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. Next item, please.
The agenda for the December 1st, 2020 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on November 24th, 2020, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Next item, please.
Three would be presentation and appointments. Three A agenda preview for the meeting of Tuesday, December 8th, 2020.
Next item. Okay, Mr. Golani.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. For December 8th, 2020, we don't have a business agenda item for the Housing Authority. However, we do have a special meeting in the afternoon commencing at 3:00 PM to the Glendale Successor Agency with one item on the agenda, which is from Community Development regarding recognized obligation payment schedule for July 2021 through June 2022. In the evening, with a regular City Council meeting commencing at 6:00 PM, we have one consent item from Public Works regarding Montrose Community Park Project. Under action items, two reports, beginning with Community Service on Parks regarding the Verdugo Park North All-Inclusive Playground Design Project, followed by City Attorney regarding the retention of an executive recruiter to assist with the recruitment, selection, and appointment of a city manager. Under hearings, Community Development regarding an appeal of design review boards, approval of design review board for the property located at 1248 Corona Drive, followed by Community Development regarding the Glendale Register Nomination and Melz Act application for 305 East Randolph Street. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next would be 3B proclamation designating November 25th through December 10th, 2020 as 16 Days of Activism Against Gender Violence.
Thank you. Okay, there's, I have the proclamation and I will, this is the proclamation, of course, as you can see, and I will read it in here. Whereas November 8 marked the 101st anniversary of founding of Zonta International in Buffalo, New York by courageous women who set out to work for gender equality and a better world. Whereas Zonta International, a worldwide service organization of business and professional individuals dedicated to empowering women through service and advocacy through its seat at the United Nations, has played a leading role in initiatives that have positively affected the lives of women and girls throughout the world. And whereas the Zonta Club of Burbank Area has been a staunch advocate for women and girls since its chartering in 1936 and continues to further its goals for the advancement of women, women's rights, and gender equality through service and advocacy. And whereas in 2005, Zonta International began an ongoing campaign called Zonta Says No, and has worked every year since to bring attention to the important issue of gender violence. And whereas the 16th Days of Activism Against Gender Violence, beginning on November 25th, the International Day for the Elimination of Violence Against Women, and ending December 10th on International Human Rights Day, is a global call for action to end gender-based violence against women as it continues to the most pervasive human rights violation and global epidemic affecting millions of women and girls of the races and socioeconomic background. And whereas Zonta urge everyone to join them in working to end violence against women and girls. No one person, organization, or community can eliminate gender-based violence on their own, but working together to prevent such violence, supporting victims, survivors, and their families, and increasing support for agencies providing services to those community members is critical to ending gender violence. Now, therefore, I, Varej Agajanian, Mayor of the City of Glendale, do hereby proclaim November 25th to December 10th, 2020, as 16 Days of Activism Against Gender Violence in the City of Glendale, and along with the Zonta Club of Burbank Area, encourage all citizens to work to end gender violence. Varej Agajanian, Mayor, December 1, 2020. And I guess I will present this to, I guess, Betty Gimple, right?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. So this is for you, so we will pass it to you. Thank you. If you want to say a few words, you're welcome to do it at this time.
Great, thank you. Thank you to the mayor and Glendale City Council for the warm welcome and proclamation. My name is Becky Gimple, and I'm a Glendale resident and the president of the Zonta Club of Burbank Area. For over 100 years, Zonta International has contributed to help achieve a world free of violence against women and girls through service and advocacy. Thirty-five percent of women worldwide have experienced either physical or sexual intimate partner violence or non-partner sexual violence. It knows no national or cultural barriers. It takes place at home, in the workplace, and in open spaces, and affects millions of women and girls in both peacetime and conflict. Violence against women and girls threatens countries, inhibits economic progress, and prevents women from contributing to their community and creating better lives for themselves and their families. This issue is now more important than ever in the face of the COVID-19 pandemic as instances of gender-based violence are on the rise. So from November 25th through December 10th, as part of the 16 Days of Activism Against Gender-Based Violence, the Zonta Club of Burbank Area will be acting both locally and globally, supplying much-needed resources to survivors of gender-based violence in our community and in support of women abroad facing instrumentable hardship during the conflict in Armenia. If you or anyone you know is a victim of gender-based violence, we encourage you to contact one of Zonta's local partners, such as the Family Service Agency of Burbank, the Glendale YWCA, or to call the National Domestic Violence Hotline at 1-800-799-SAFE. If you would like to learn more about the Zonta Club of Burbank Area and its efforts in advocating for and empowering women worldwide, please visit zontaburbank.org. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Gimple. Is there any comments from my colleagues? But I just want to mention that you are with Zonta Club of Burbank, but you live in Glendale. So maybe we have to add Zonta Club of Burbank and Glendale to it.
Yes, we actually added area onto the Burbank area, and we have members in Pasadena, Van Nuys, Glendale, Burbank. So it just started in Burbank, but we are happy to spread Zonta's mission throughout the whole San Fernando and San Gabriel Valley.
Thank you. My colleagues want to, Ms. Devine?
Yes.
I'd like to just, this is Councilmember Devine, just thank you for all the work that you do on behalf of women and ending violence and, of course, giving help and aid to those, support to those who are going through it. So thank you so much, and I know that we don't have Zonta here in Glendale. You do belong in Burbank. We have Serotimus with kind of works in the same way you do, but a kind of a more variety of causes, but thank you so much. You're a great group, great group.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Is there any other comment? If not, okay. Thank you for joining us, and hopefully we'll see you soon, maybe next year. Thank you. Next item, please.
Four consent items, including minutes to following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Okay, next item, please.
Next item would be City Council and staff comments.
Any comments by my colleagues?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have.
Mr. Councilmember Najarian?
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we were all pretty surprised last week when the county went so far as to ban outdoor dining. It was, as we know and as we've been following the past few months, these decisions related to COVID are made by the chief health officer of the jurisdiction. The jurisdiction that we fall under is LA County. Our neighboring city of Pasadena has had their own health department for decades, as well as the city of Long Beach. So even if we wanted to take some action to take a different approach towards, let's say, outdoor dining, we would have, we would be prohibited by doing so because we do not have our health department. We got emails. I know council has independently spoken to the city manager about what can we do. I would, I think it's worth looking into, giving direction to the city manager to find out in what manner economically and quickly we could qualify as a health department in our city, so we, as the City Council of Glendale, can make the decisions determining our future regarding COVID and certainly those very controversial orders that have just come down from the LA County Health Officer. I'm not saying we would snap our fingers and change their direction, but if there's something we can do, outsourcing it perhaps on a consultant basis, meet the qualification and check the boxes for having a health department, I think we should look into it and take our, take our direction from within the city rather than being imposed by the county, local rule.
I want to join, I want to join because I received so many calls and so many texts that how come Pasadena can have restaurants open outside, I mean, not inside, of course, and we can't do it. I received so many calls, so I just want to join you on this issue, at least to study, to see why is it or what is involved with this issue, whether Pasadena probably getting money from somewhere, I don't know where, maybe if anybody can help me, they are getting money from somewhere. I mean, it's not that they're spending their own money to have a, you know, like this health department. Somehow they are getting something, so maybe if we figure out that, then it will be easier to create a department or rent it out, a company to do it.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, based on our quick research that we did last week after the new health orders came out and upon your inquiries, from what we gather from city of Pasadena, they have a $15 million budget. Majority of it comes from general fund. They do get some grants from the state, but we don't know right now how much. And they have a workforce that works in the department of nearly 100 employees. And as Councilman Najarian noted, they've had this, their health department since their incorporation back in the late 1800s. But since we have a request, we will definitely look into the feasibility of starting our own health department in the city.
I would like to actually, if there's that going to be a report coming back, I wouldn't want it to just be about Glendale having its own. I would like us to study and see what it would take for us to perhaps contract out with Pasadena, as some of our animal control services have been done over the years. We don't have to, you know, look at something that, you know, it's going to be so cost prohibitive. We may actually end up having savings if we partner with Pasadena or find a way to fall under their jurisdiction. I'd like that to be part of the report, and I support Councilmember Najarian's request. I also want to just state that, you know, we are seeing an incredible rise in the number of cases of COVID, and with our population, we do need to be very careful. We do have an older population that has been noted by the fire chief and others, and we're approaching that 7,000, almost, sick people mark, which is very, very concerning.
Yes, thank you. Is there any other comment by my colleagues? Ms. Devine?
Thank you, thank you. I just want to mention on that particular subject that be careful what you wish for, look what happened in Pasadena. They allowed outdoor dining, and now they're closing it down because they had so many violations. They had people in the parks that didn't have masks on. They were really taking advantage of that ruling, so let's tread carefully. I received an email from the Rancho about graffiti not being removed in a sufficient time, timing, and I'm wondering if, I don't know if Yaz is here, Yazden, Ammani, Ammani is here to, supposedly we only have one person that cleans up graffiti in the city, and I'm wondering if that's true.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Devine, we do have one full-time graffiti painter. We also do some hourly, maybe about half-time, cover the entire city, but he's very responsive. If there is graffiti, we'll get word of it, we'll get him right out that day and have it painted out. I know up in Kenneth Village, they had experienced that. He's done some out in the Rancho, under the overpass several times. If you just let Neighborhood Services know, be happy to get him out that day.
Okay, because I was thinking if we needed, if we needed more, more staff on that account, we could maybe hire some Glendale Youth Alliance kids to maybe, you know, if we all of a sudden have a rash of gang graffiti over at the Rancho, maybe get a couple of Glendale Youth Alliance kids out there to clean it up if our, our staff member is not available. Just, just a suggestion, and I will be sure to write and let them know that, to let Neighborhood Services know.
Sure.
They did say that they contacted the city, and it took a couple of weeks, and so I just want to make sure that, you know, the sooner we get this, having come from the education background and the graffiti and the gangs, et cetera, I know that if you don't remove it immediately, it just kind of exponentially increases, so I just want to make sure we stop it. Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Lansbury.
Thank you. Mr. Brotman?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on COVID, I'm not going to say anything that's revolutionary, but, you know, I am, I am, and I think we are very encouraged with the news of, of the pending vaccines, two, I think, that are highly effective, that are going to be approved imminently, and probably several more. And some of that, some of that rolling out very quickly, at least to select people like frontline healthcare workers. So there's light at the end of the tunnel, but, you know, between now and when we can reasonably be expected to some relief, you know, the predictions are that we could have, again, another doubling of the deaths nationwide. We had, what, something like 250,000 people die. The projections are that over the next three months, I think, we could be doubling that number. So it's, it's, you know, it's encouraging, but we've got to hunker down during this period, and, and, you know, they're just, the experts just keep saying the same thing. It's about wearing face coverings, and I know some people are doubtful about face coverings, but as time goes on, I think the evidence is clear and clear that they make a big difference, especially when they're worn correctly, which means covering the numbers. And, you know, the other things, the distancing and avoiding, you know, avoiding the gatherings and, and washing one's hands and the rest of it. So just want to, want to emphasize how important this is. We want to get through this next three, three, you know, certainly three months at least. We want to get through it and minimize our losses, and everybody needs to pull together and just be a little bit more patient. And I would like to ask, you know, if Neighborhood Services and the police, police department could just kind of step up their efforts over the next few weeks at least, to look at parks, look at our commercial areas, watch out for parties, I mean, there shouldn't be any parties now, not even outside, and, and, you know, it's not as if we want to slap citations on people that can't afford them, but be out there and make people know what's allowed and not allowed, and keeping, keeping up the messaging on Nextdoor and elsewhere so that people know if they see violations, they, they don't just post them on Nextdoor, you know, they need to, they need to call. There are numbers that we have, you can call the police department, you can call Neighborhood Services, and, and action will be taken. But I think that we need to do a little bit more to make sure people know where to call and, and that there will be a response. So I wanted to say that. One other thing, Mr. Mayor, if I could continue, is...
Please.
I'm especially worried now about, you know, how these, you know, new safer-at-home orders are going to affect our small businesses, especially, you know, bars and restaurants or barbers or, you know, retailers that, that are, have walking customers. I know we let our commercial eviction moratorium expire, I think, at the end of June, and we gave small mom-and-pop businesses, or at least we gave businesses with under 100 employees a six-month safe harbor period to pick up for any missed rents. But that means that there's some big bills that are coming due January 1st, just at a time when we're, you know, we have these health officer orders that are making it difficult for these businesses to generate any revenue. And I'm worried, and I think probably all share the worry, that we're going to see a wave of, of mom-and-pop bankruptcies and, and, you know, kind of empty storefronts, like I think we saw after the Great Recession. It's a changed circumstance, and I think it requires that we relook at the decisions we made in June. So I would like, if I could get support from a colleague, to ask staff to come back, and I think it could be next week because we really don't have time to waste on this, but have staff come back with some ideas. I would suggest we keep it focused on those who really need it, and it's limited relief, maybe we're only extending repayment period by another six months, I don't know. But I, but I think we need to revisit that question and do what we can right now to give a little bit more window for the small businesses that, that have these back rents that are just not going to be able to make those payments on, on, on January 1st.
I will support that.
I would second that as well.
Thank you. And that's it for me. Thanks, Mr.
Thank you. Is there any other comment?
Mr. Mayor, just something...
Yes, Mr. Councilmember Kasakian?
Very, very quickly, I just want to... Very, very quickly, I just want to, for the sake of time, I know we started late and the hour is already late and we have a full agenda ahead of us, but I just want to ask if any of my colleagues would support an idea to adopt the city council policy, maybe codify it somehow, requiring our staff reports to be completed two weeks before meetings, when they will be considered, from when they will be considered. And for then, any presentations that are going to be made, the PowerPoint presentations to be completed and submitted a week before the meeting. So that gives us more time and residents more time and stakeholders more time to absorb and understand the information that's coming before us. Other jurisdictions have done it, and I know it's asking staff to do a lot, but if we can do this quickly, I think the holiday break should give staff ample time to get a jump on the report setter and the pipeline. And I think it's fair and I think it's important for us to do this.
I will support that too. Next.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess if there is no other comment, I want to go to community event announcement. And now I would like to take any calls from the public as it relates to community event announcement. We will take at least five calls. Speaker will be given three minutes to share their comments. Do we have any calls?
Yes, Mayor, I have four callers waiting.
Okay, let's go to the callers.
Justin King, you're live, Justin.
Hello, my name is Justin King, and I'm a current resident of Glen Oaks Canyon and member of the Glen Oaks Canyon Homeowners Association. While I was analyzing the DEIR for the proposed biogas project at the Shoal Canyon landfill, I researched the potential water quality issues associated with the landfill. I reviewed the current groundwater monitoring reports that have been posted to the state database geotracker. Of particular concern is the groundwater assessment of per and polyfluoroalkyl substances known as PFOS of the Shoal Canyon landfill that was conducted by the sanitation districts of Los Angeles. The report from the sanitation districts was issued on February 21st, 2020. My comments tonight will focus on the PFOS issues in the groundwater associated with the Shoal Canyon landfill. The state regional water board defines PFOS as a large group of human-made substances that do not occur naturally in the environment and are resistant to heat, water, and oil. PFOS can be found in air, water, and soil. PFOS are persistent in the environment, bioaccumulate in the body, and are toxic at low levels of concentration. Potential adverse health impacts associated with PFOS exposure include liver damage, thyroid disease, decreased fertility, high cholesterol, obesity, hormone suppression, and cancer. Major applications of PFOS have included protectors for paper and cardboard packaging products, carpet, leather products, and textiles, all of which are products that are dumped into the landfill. In fact, on the regional board site, landfills are listed as a major source of PFOS and a potential pathway for PFOS to migrate to groundwater. The Shoal Canyon landfill is an unlined landfill, which means that PFOS compounds have a clear pathway to impact groundwater and migrate down gradient from the landfill into the surrounding neighborhood, which is Glen Oaks Canyon. According to the groundwater assessment report, PFOS constituents were detected above reporting limits in samples from several groundwater monitoring wells down gradient from the landfill. PFOS compounds were detected above the notification and response levels at the barrier barrier one monitoring well and the one perimeter monitoring well. PFOS compounds were detected in the one offsite monitoring well that was tested, but not above the notification response levels. I am requesting that the city council take a vested interest in the PFOS issues at the Shoal Canyon landfill and pressure the sanitation districts of Los Angeles to develop a comprehensive plan to further investigate and monitor PFOS compounds in groundwater and remove PFOS concentrations that exceed regulatory notification response levels. Part of this plan should be installed, more down gradient monitoring wells in Glen Oaks Canyon. There currently is one perimeter monitoring well and two down gradient monitoring wells. Two of the monitoring wells are shallow and are periodically dry, which prevents sampling of the groundwater. An increased number of groundwater monitoring wells will also assist in monitoring other potential contaminants in groundwater emanating from the landfill. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next caller, please.
Kenny Lund, Kenny, you're live.
Ah, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Kenny Lund. A friend of mine who belongs to the group called Safe Glendale told me that there is a push by some people to try and overturn the marijuana ban in Glendale. I know what cannabis shops have done to different parts of LA, and I don't want that for Glendale. 90% of all addictions start in the teen years, a lifetime of addiction and misery because some kid decided to experiment with pot use. I've experienced this myself. I smoked weed with my friends when I was younger. Many of them still smoke pot daily. One of every six teens who start to use pot will become dependent upon pot. Today's pot is much stronger than even a few years ago, and everyone should know this. This is no longer some minor relatively harmless drug. Legal doesn't mean safe. Every few weeks, a new study is released that emphasizes the dangers to the brain. CNN, Washington Post, Wall Street Journal have all posted major studies that talk about pot and increased suicides, mental illness, increased birth defects, worsen lives, and soaring addiction rates. We were told that pot would bring in the big bucks for the city and the state, but the bad news is that the tax money is way down and the enforcement troubles are way up. Certainly in many parts of LA, they haven't profited. So have you walked the streets in any of these areas that have legalized pot in selling in their areas? Do you see the pot shops or what they're bringing to those towns? Family addiction, drug use for youth? Maybe you know a few people who own a pot business and they tell you that they're making money? Well, if you make money and the rest of us pay the price, especially my generation. My generation is supposed to find solutions to things like climate change, but we are being influenced by a drug that makes us unable to think clearly or to be energetic. I like Glendale because it's a cleaner environment and more family-friendly. So many areas of LA are inundated with troubled homeless who got tangled in teen drug and alcohol use. One way to prevent drug use is don't welcome it into your community, learn from LA's mistakes, learn from the rest of the area's troubles. I urge you to do the safe thing, maintain the ban, and respect not only Glendale residents, but the many of us who come to Glendale to work and shop. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next caller.
Daniel Probut, Daniel, you're live.
Yes, hi, good evening. This is Daniel. Hello, Honorable Mayor, City Council. My call really takes issue with what the call you just got. I want to encourage the city council to agendize and approve at least one cannabis dispensary in the city. This way, the city will have an ordinance in place, which the state will not dictate the amount of dispensary uses that we have should should have in next year. To remind you all, of course, Thursday, the House Representatives will vote to decriminalize cannabis on a federal level. Please consider approving at least one cannabis dispensary in the city so the state does not dictate 15 or 20 based on our population. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Annabelle Dean, Annabelle?
Hello.
Yes, go ahead.
Hello, Honorable Mayor and City Council. The purpose of this call is actually related to the two previous calls. I actually was calling to ask the city to agendize these as the neighboring cities have. As you know, Pasadena has approved cannabis retailers, Burbank has agendized the study session. And the the thing is that once, once we don't make a decision and once we don't act because of the decisions that are going to be made, our city will maybe be dealing with having to have 15 to 16 dispensaries. So as actually the previous caller stated, what concerned me is that the House of Reps will be voting to decriminalize cannabis. And once that happens, I believe that if we don't act and bring up the topic and approve it within our regulations, our limits, the mandate will make us have dispensaries per every 15,000 residents will have to have one. So I was concerned, even as a mom, that we are going to be having more than, more than, you know, what's necessary here. 15 to 16 is way too much. I don't even want that for our city. So I was, I was looking and it said that 15 for our population, it would be around 15 to 16. And that, that concerns me. So I believe that, you know, even as a mom, as a resident, we should take control of that and make our own decisions about this as a city, you know, to make sure we have what we want for our city and not allow the mandate to dictate any, any decision for us. That is all.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Arutun, Arutunian?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. The purpose of my call was just to thank the members of the council as well as the mayor, the Glendal Water and Power, and the Glendal Police Department for being responsive to my request for lighting on my street as well as for additional patrol due to the dissonant tempest bravery that we, our family had to endure through. So I just wanted to come in to say thank you. Thank you for the, and the woman of the Glendal Police Department, the Water and Power, and the members of the council. Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Mayor, that was the final caller.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. And now, next, next item, please.
Action items. See, the Fire Department regarding adoption of a resolution acknowledging the Glendale City Council received a report from the Fire Department regarding the annual inspection of occupancies required by the State of California, Health and Safety Code Section 13146.2 and 13146.3. One resolution recognizing the Glendale Fire Department's level of compliance with California Health and Safety Code Section 13146.2 and 13146.3.
Thank you. Mr. Golania.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm going to turn it over to Chief Lanzus for a brief report on this item.
Chief Lanzus.
Good evening, Mayor Agajanian, members of council. Sylvia Lanzus, your fire chief. I am before you this evening regarding our performance of annual fire inspections, correction annual inspections pursuant to Senate Bill 1205. Get the presentation up here real quick. Get that back up. We'll start with what is Senate Bill 1205? After the tragic Ghost Ship Fire in Oakland, California, which occurred in December of 2016, national attention was brought to California's fire inspection and safety laws. Senate Bill 1205 was signed into law on September 27th, 2018, and requires reporting of annual inspections of residential and educational occupancies. It also requires acknowledgement by resolution by the approved authority, in this case, our city council. Don't wait on me. Don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves here. Let's see that one. Click on it. Oh, sounds like my time's up.
Your time is.
Go ahead. Thank you. Doesn't look like my clicker is going to work here. Okay, so we covered what the Senate bill requires. Next is which inspections are mandated to be conducted. State law requires that we inspect residential facilities. These are hotels, motels, apartments, and residential care facilities. Educational facilities, all public and private schools with six or more students. High-rise occupancies, which have an occupied floor of 75 feet or higher. Institutions, any business or building with hazardous materials, storage, or use. Industrial waste facilities or any facility that creates treated disposable waste that goes into the storm drain. In addition to those, Glendal Municipal Code requires that we inspect assemblies, daycare centers, and over 9,000 vegetation management inspections conducted each year. Other inspections that are conducted by our Fire Department, Fire Prevention Bureau, are new and tenant improvement construction inspections, special event and filming inspections, hazard complaint inspections, and fire occupancy clearance inspections. We inspect over 15,000 sites each year. As would seem obvious, the 2020 COVID-19 had a tremendous impact on the fire prevention industry. Many of Los Angeles County departments had a full closure of their fire prevention sections for over four months. Many departments are predicting a shortfall of completion of their inspections required by Senate Bill 1205 for 2020. A couple of those close examples to us are Burbank, for example, in 2019, received 81% compliance with Senate Bill 1201 required inspections. And for 2020, they expect to be at 50 to 60% completion. Pasadena for 2019 was at 77% for educational and 51% for residential inspections and anticipates a 30% reduction for this year. I'm proud that our Glendale Fire Prevention Section has completed 100% of our Senate Bill 1205 inspection and is on track to complete all Glendale Municipal Code required inspections within the calendar year. The Fire Prevention Bureau immediately put a plan in place in early March to safely continue our commitment to our safety and to our community. We continued to safely perform fire and life safety inspections. We were the first department or are the first department in Los Angeles County to safely reopen our household hazardous waste collection facility. We're currently opening that facility from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM every Wednesday and will reopen one Saturday a month beginning January 9th. And we also ensured that all new construction inspections continued without delay. Some of the numbers that I'll run through quickly, there, the group E inspections, our educational inspections, there's 43 of those, we've completed all of those. Our group R inspections, our hotels, motels, apartments, and care facilities, there's over 4,000 of those. We have again completed 100% of those. Our high-rise inspections, jails, hospitals, and assemblies, there's 368 of those, and we are on track to complete 100 of those. That's probably the one area where we're most challenged right now. We're having a hard time with many of the assemblies that are closed, being able to to get inside of those to inspect them, but we are continuing to work on meeting that challenge by the end of the year. As I mentioned, beginning over 9,000 vegetation and management inspections, which we completed 100% of those initial inspections. And then our COOPA inspections, we have 683 of those, we will also reach 100%. And then industrial waste, over 650 of those, and again, on track for full completion. This just again talks about the total number. There are total inspections, including the Senate Bill 1205 required inspections of 15,138. And again, I'm proud to say that we will reach 100% by the end of the calendar year. I respectfully recommend that the council approve the resolution recognizing the Fire Department's level of compliance with California Health and Safety Code Section 13146.2 and 13146.3 pursuant to Senate Bill 1205. There is no fiscal impact and there is no ask by this request. And I would just like to briefly acknowledge again, our Fire Prevention Section led by Fire Marshal Jeff Ragusa and the entire Fire Prevention Team, who have worked diligently throughout the pandemic over the net, over the past 11 months to make sure that our community maintains its safe operating and safe fire prevention posture. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Chief Lanzus. Is there any question from the chief?
I do.
Ms. Devine?
Yes, thank you, chief. Congratulations, good job. That's why you're the best fire department in the state. My question is about household hazardous materials and the address of the location, please, if you would, let our residents know and what they can bring to that location.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Devine, great question. I do believe the address, Fire Member, off the top of my head is 735 Flower Street. It's our EMC building, 735 Flower Street. It is available on our website at Glendale Fire, that all the requirements and all the material that they could bring, but essentially, any household hazardous waste is available to be brought to that facility. That is household oil, paints, paint thinner, anything that should not be put down the drain that that you use or create in your home can be brought to that. that, that you use or create in your home can be brought to that facility. We are planning in 2021 to expand on our collection. We do have plans in place to have a medical drop-off, to be able to, to drop off, um, uh, medical prescription medicines on certain days. So we will be advertising that after the first of the year. But essentially, anything that you create at your home that's hazardous, that should not be put down the drain or in the trash, can be brought to our hazardous waste disposal site at 735 Flower Street.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other question or?
I'll move the item.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brodmann?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kassakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes, thank you, Chief Lanzus. What's next, please, Mr. Ajani?
Public Works Regarding Standardization of Backhoe Loaders and Tractor Loaders to Deere and Company John Deere for the purchase of new backhoe loaders and tractor loaders, parts and maintenance services. One, resolution adopting John Deere as the city standard for backhoe loaders and tractor loaders and dispensing with competitive bidding for the procurement of John Deere backhoe loaders, tractor loaders, John Deere equipment, parts, and John Deere maintenance services from Bragg Investment Company DBA Coastline Equipment.
Thank you. Mr. Golanyan?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Member City Council. I'm going to turn it over to Yazdan M. Rani, Public Works Director, for a brief report on this item.
Mr. M. Rani.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Councilmembers.
How come you're in dark?
So, lighting here is a little bit too low. Um, this is a, uh, a report basically regarding standardizing our equipment with John Deere equipment. We currently have a small fleet of these backhoes, about 21 pieces, uh, which we use between Public Works, Glendale Water Power, and Community Services Department. Uh, our staff is recommending this standardization because, uh, John Deere is the best in class. There, they have more horsepower than their nearest competitors. And basically, we use these for many different activities. For example, Water and Power uses their backhoes for, as a loader, as a breaker, as a crane, as an excavator. So really using four pieces of equipment in one. And so that's stated plenty in the long run. And in addition, our staff is going to be more familiar with how to, uh, prepare these, how to operate these safely. We can standardize our training for our operators. So, uh, for these reasons, uh, we are recommending the, this standardization. We've also checked with, uh, some of our, um, our neighboring cities, including, uh, city of Burbank and, uh, Pasadena. And they are also using, especially Pasadena is using John Deere equipment. They haven't standardized, but they, when we talked to them about what we're planning on doing, they said, "A great idea. We're, we're going to probably do that, too." So both Burbank and, uh, Pasadena are going to probably pursue a standardization similar to ours as well. Uh, and, uh, that concludes my report, and, uh, I would be available for any questions that you may have.
If there is no question, we can move the item.
Mayor, I do have a caller on the line for eight.
Okay, let's go to the call.
David Eisenberg? David, go ahead. David, can you hear me? David, go ahead. David Eisenberg, can you hear us?
David? Is there any other caller?
Not a mayor. He's the only one.
Yes, David?
Hello?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, good evening, um, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is David Eisenberg. I'm, uh, a longtime Glendale resident. And I have, uh, one concern about this item, and that's the term of the agreement. The city is, has been looking at electrification of, uh, equipment. They've been looking at, um, uh, lawn equipment and, uh, vehicles. I understand you're even testing, uh, electric bus and electric motorcycles for the police department. And if you lock it into 10 years and a comparable electric vehicle, uh, electric backhoe becomes available, we'll be locked into gas equipment for 10 years. And I'd like to see you put an escape clause in this so that if John Deere comes up with an electric version, uh, that we switch to that. Uh, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, bye, Matt. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Brodmann.
Yeah, um, I had, I had two things, and one of them was, was that, I know, and I talked to Mr. Rani about this already, about, you know, making sure we're looking at emerging technology, uh, for, you know, with, um, heavy-duty vehicles that are electrified. So I think he knows, and he can maybe speak to this, but he knows that, you know, that's something we definitely want to look at. What is this? Can you just respond to what is this 10-year, uh, clause? And what does that really mean for us? And, and, you know, because I do want to be able to, um, you know, move this new, um, electric technology if it, if it, you know, if and when it becomes available and it has the, uh, the, the torque we need and all the rest of it, right? And I know you want that, too. So if you could just respond to that, uh, real quick, great.
Absolutely. Um, Councilmember Brodmann, we, uh, also asked this question of our neighboring cities, and we did our own research right now. They're not using any, uh, electric backhoes. The technology is not there, as I understand it yet. However, we are keeping our eyes open. And, uh, once it becomes available, uh, we would, uh, move forward with that. This, uh, agreement doesn't lock us into, um, well, I should say, this agreement would provide for, uh, flexibility and when that, uh, piece of equipment becomes available, that we can, uh, switch to that with, uh, John Deere or with any other, um, you know, vendor for the matter. But at this point, uh, that, that technology is not, uh, available currently.
So, so does that mean there would be, um, because I don't even, I'm not sure I'm clear on what this 10-year clause relates to. So that means we would have no, you know, financial penalties if we, if we decided after a certain number of years, you know, two, three years from now that the technology's there? But it's, uh, it's a Chinese company. It's not John Deere, and, and we want to go in that direction. There's no, there, there would be no financial consequences for this?
Uh, we can, basically, uh, once the technology becomes available and, uh, you know, we want to move in that direction, uh, the, we're standardizing onto John Deere backhoes, basically, uh, technology. So if the electrical ones become available, we can specify, uh, electrical, uh, backhoes instead of the, the diesel-powered one.
Even if John Deere doesn't make them?
Uh, if they don't make it, uh, that would be something that we would have to look at at that time to see, um, how we can, uh, move forward in that direction. With John Deere, we have that flexibility. If there's another company that comes along and has it and has the same, uh, specifications, then we would have to revisit this, uh, you know, revisit it at that time.
Well, that, yeah, that's really my question because, you know, it's very, it very well may not be John Deere. A lot of these technologies are coming out of China. Who knows, right? It could be a German company. It could be any, any, another American company. So, so I just want to make sure that we're not in a position where we're going to have to face a big penalty if we decide, no, not going to continue to buy John Deere. We're going to buy our next round of purchases are going to be from whoever.
Uh, Councilmember Brodmann, I think if that's the, uh, at that time, if, uh, once that technology becomes available, we would be, um, uh, seeking direction from the Council. And if that's the Council direction to move to another company, we would then, uh, would have to consult with our, uh, City Attorney's Office and then, uh, bring forth a recommendation on, uh, procurement for, of these types of equipment with another company and how we can, uh, change the agreement with the, you know, on that specific piece of equipment.
Okay, but no, no penalties. I, I just don't want, like, some kind of liquidated damage or who knows what if, if we decide that we're going to shift, change course in five years.
Uh, I'm not aware of any penalties, but I would defer to, um, to our, uh, City Attorney, uh, on that question.
Mr. Garcia.
Okay, can we, can we, you know, can I, can I?
Probably, probably. I apologize. I, my microphone wasn't on. Mr. Councilmember Brodmann, we, it's something we will look at. Again, the primary action here is to approve the standardization with John Deere. And we're approving a contract with, uh, the, the Bragg Investment Company. And we will look at what rights we have as, with respect to, uh, making changes during the middle of the contract.
So, so do we hold off on a decision now? Or can we, can we move ahead with this and make it conditioned on, um, ensuring that we, we don't face any kind of financial, uh, damages if we make that, make a shift in, let's say, five years or three, whatever?
Um, Mr. Mayor, Member City Council? Yes, Councilmember Brodmann. We can move forward with the item. But at, until such time that we have a, um, response from the City Attorney's Office, we will not enter into a contract. That would give you a level of comfort that we have received the opinion of the cities at the City Attorney.
And, and would that then come back to us? I just want to make sure that, you know, w- we don't enter into a contract that locks us in. It's pretty simple, right?
Yeah.
And I don't want a situation in, in three years where you say, "Well, we can, we can move to another vendor, but we're going to have to pay, you know, a million dollars." Like, I don't want that either. So how do, what do we do to make sure that that doesn't happen?
Yeah, I, I can't answer the question right now, Councilmember Brodmann. But the best I could say is we should approve the standardization, and we will bring it back if we, um, if, if that's something that needs to be addressed in the contract. If we cannot get the term that you are requesting, we would come back for further discussion.
So why we don't postpone this to next week or a month later? And then review it and bring it back?
I'd say bring it back next week.
Is that, okay?
Mr. Mayor, we can bring it back next week.
All right, look into it and we'll, this item will come back next week. Okay, can we, uh, Ms. Brodm, I'm, I'm sorry. Ms. Devine, did you have anything to add? Or we just can discuss this next week?
Oh, that's fine. No, next week is fine.
All right, uh, okay, we postpone this to next week. So next item, please.
Mayor, before I read item 8C, I do believe the Fire Chief has a comment to make.
Oh, Chief Lanzus.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I apologize for the interruption. I just wanted to make a correction. The address to our, uh, waste facility drop-off site is 780 Flower Street, 780 Flower Street. I apologize for the mistake.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, please.
HC is Community Development Regarding North Hollywood to Pasadena Bus Rapid Transit Project. One motion noting City Council comments on North Hollywood to Pasadena Bus Rapid Transit Project in Glendale.
Thank you. I guess we have a guest to, okay, Mr. Golanyan.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Member City Council. We do have representatives from Metro who are managing this project, as it was read into the record. This is in regards to the draft EIR for the Bus Rapid Transit proposed project between North Hollywood and Pasadena. However, I'm going to turn it over first to Bradley Calvert for our Assistant Director of Community Development for introduction of the item.
Mr. Calvert.
Great, thank you, Mayor and Members of City Council. Tonight, we are looking for Council's feedback on the draft EIR for the, uh, BR, Metro BRT that connects, uh, North Hollywood to Pasadena. Specifically looking for Council's feedback in regards to the route alternatives. The first of which utilizes, uh, State Route 134. The second utilizes, uh, existing surface streets in Glendale such as Glen Oaks, Central, Broadway, or Colorado. Uh, we would also be looking for feedback from Council regarding the street configurations and how we would incorporate existing or future bike facilities along with these routes. Uh, so what I'd like to do is turn this over to our colleagues at Metro for them to provide a brief presentation, and then, uh, turn to Council for your feedback input that we can then submit as part of the CIR.
Yes, Mr. Byron, I guess.
Hi, my name is Gary Byrne. I'm the Deputy Project Manager from LA Metro for the North Hollywood to Pasadena Bus Rapid Transit. If you'll give me just a second, I'll pull up my presentation. There we go. So I'm happy to be here today to give you a quick update on where we are with this project. Um, I'm going to first go over a bit of project background to bring you up to speed on where we are and how we got here. Then I'm going to go over some key stats on the project, and then I'll do a bit of a deeper dive into some of the configurations that we're proposing in Glendale. So as I mentioned, for some project background, this is a Measured in Project. We have 267 million in Measure M and SB1 funding. In the spring of 2019, we completed an alternatives analysis where we looked at a whole bunch of different routes, um, throughout the corridor. And the result of that was that the street running segments tended to perform better. So we recommended advancing a refined street running alternative with some route options into an environmental study. Starting in the spring, again, of that year, 2019, we did an extended scoping period for about two months. We basically introduced the project to the public, gave them a chance to give us feedback on what they thought we should study. Um, and then we got a lot of great feedback, did a lot of community meetings. We received over 2,500 comments on the scope of our EIR. And as a result of that great volume of comments, we did additionally workshops in the fall of last year, um, where we gave the community a chance to do hands-on activities where they were able to tell us things like how they prioritize different street elements, like whether they prefer wider sidewalks or wider travel lanes. And they also had a chance to tell us how they wanted to see the BRT integrate into their community. So some of the goals and objectives of this project, we're really trying to provide a new premium transit option into some communities that haven't had it. We're trying to provide that connection between North Hollywood and Pasadena. It's been sort of a gap in our regional network for a while now. We want to provide access that's convenient to all the major local and regional centers along the way, places like Burbank and Glendale. We want to provide that enhanced connectivity to the broader network in Pasadena and North Hollywood. We also want to improve passenger comfort and convenience as well as support the community plans along the way. Um, along that line, we've been coordinating with all the other Metro efforts throughout the project corridor. The North San Fernando Valley BRT project will also terminate in North Hollywood. We've been closely coordinating with them. Metro is also preparing a joint development project in North Hollywood that's going to completely reimagine how we integrate into that community. The Next Gen Project, which is overhauling our entire bus network for the first time in a very long time. We've been very closely coordinating with them to make sure that this new service will complement the Next Gen rather than compete with them. So here's our project map. For the purposes of the California Environmental Quality Act, we had to identify a quote-unquote "proposed" project. That's the route you see in purple. However, as I mentioned, based on all the community feedback, we decided to keep some route options in play, and those are the segments you see in pink. All of these were studied equally in the EIR, and they're given equal weight. Ultimately, it will be up to our Metro Board to make the final decision on which route is selected. So just a quick overview, starting in North Hollywood. The proposed project goes on Chandler for a brief segment before heading south on Vineland. We also have a route option in North Hollywood that would just go straight down Lankersham. Both options wind up on the 134 before hopping off in the Burbank Media District to serve all the studios in that area and the high-rises. Then the project would proceed up Olive to downtown Burbank, and we're proposing a direct connection to the downtown Burbank MetroLink station. From there, the project proceeds onto Glen Oaks into Glendale. And from Glen Oaks, we have several route options in central Glendale. The proposed project goes down Central and then proceeds east on Broadway. We have a very similar option that would go a little further south on Central and then use Colorado. And then lastly, we have a freeway option that would sort of bypass central Glendale and just hop on the 134, um, to get to Eagle Rock. Within Eagle Rock, we have the proposed project on Colorado, and we also have a separate freeway segment, um, for the Eagle Rock portion of the route. Both options wind up on the 134 to get to Pasadena. Within Pasadena, we have several different route options, a couple different ways to get off the freeway, one at Fair Oaks and then one on Colorado. And then we have a couple different options to head east to the terminus. One would be the proposed project on Colorado, but we also have a couplet option that uses the Green Street, Union Street one-way streets as a sort of loop to make that east-west travel in Pasadena. Ultimately, all of the route options will terminate at Pasadena City College. So some key stats on our project. If you were to take current bus service from end to end along this route, it would take you about two hours. But with this project, we think we can get that down to just over an hour, which is a pretty significant savings. Our right- Our ridership studies indicates that most people won't actually be doing the full end-to-end trip. The bulk of the riders are taking it from point to point in between. So as a sample trip, if you were to go from downtown Glendale to downtown Burbank using current bus service, it'd take you just over 20 minutes, but we think we can get that down to 17 minutes or so, which is about a 20% savings. Similarly, if you were to go on current service from downtown Glendale to Pasadena City College, that would take you about 45 minutes on current service, but we think we can get that down to about a half an hour, which saves you about a third of your time. The overall project's length is just over 18 miles, and we're planning between 21 to 23 stations depending on which route options get selected. Our ridership study is actually pretty robust. We're showing 30,000 boardings in 2024, and that rises to 35,000 in 2042. We're hoping to operate this like a premium transit service, so similar to our rail service. That means 10-minute headways all day on weekdays, and that'll taper down to 15 to 30 minutes during the evenings, late nights, and weekends. Similarly, the hours of operation will be mirrored to the rail service so that you can rely on this as a good connection to the rail services. That means 21 to 23 hours per day with longer hours on the weekend to catch those extra late-night riders. And then lastly, we are planning to operate with 40-foot zero-mission electric buses. The whole metro bus fleet is going electric, but we've been told that we're prioritized to receive those, so we're hoping to open with the electric buses, which are great because they're quieter, everybody loves them. So in terms of the project benefits, our SEQUA study showed no significant and unavoidable impacts to the environment. The less-than-significant impacts we did identify, most of those were actually related to construction activities, things like dust and noise. And the good thing is those go away once construction ends and the project is operating. In fact, because this is a transit project and we're encouraging people to get out of their cars and take transit instead of driving alone, we're reducing vehicle mile travel metric for the region. So that means there's regional benefits to things like transportation, air quality, reducing overall energy use and greenhouse gas emissions. And again, because we're opening with those electric buses, we would actually see a benefit to noise since the electric buses are quieter. More specifically, in Glendale, the project provides that premium high-capacity transit right through the heart of the city. It'll provide improved regional connection and access by giving people a faster connection to the regional rail network in Pasadena and North Hollywood. Another benefit to Glendale is that everything we're proposing preserves almost all of the parking. There are a few cases where we may need to take a space or two at stations just to sort of provide enough space to build those stations, but overall, the parking is untouched. We also, by proposing the route on Central, we would likely be relocating bus services to Central, and that could improve traffic flow on brand and remove all the conflicts with the current, you know, angled parking and the buses trying to weave in and out. And then finally, we also, our options preserve the bike lanes on Glen Oaks and Central. So here's a more detailed look. Our section along Glen Oaks Boulevard, the top is what is currently on Glen Oaks, and then below is what we're proposing. You can see that we're proposing to essentially replace the inside traveling with bus lanes. This is great because it's the optimal BRT operation configuration. It removes a lot of the conflicts with turns, turning cars. It also allows us to essentially leave the cars and bike lanes untouched. The medians would have to be reconfigured slightly at intersections, and that's mostly just because the stations would be provided in that median space. And then also to properly accommodate left turns, we would be reconfiguring the medians, but only at intersections. They're left largely untouched. The downside is this is less likely to be used by local buses because they stop more frequently than we would, but we still think this is a great option for providing this premium BRT connection through a good chunk of Glendale. Here you can see what a rendering of what we think it might look like on Glen Oaks. I believe this is Alameda. You can see the stations are provided in the center of the roadway and they're accessed via the crosswalks. You can see that we'd be providing canopies, the turn lanes are all still there, the medians are only reconfigured at the intersections. You can see the trees in the background remain, and we think this would be a great premium service for the community. So here's a cross-section on Central. Again, the existing is on the top and what we're proposing is below. In this one, we're also proposing to convert a lane of travel. In this case, it's the outside lane in what we call a side-running configuration. This is good because if we are planning to centralize the bus services onto Central, side-running configuration does do better for those local buses, including the Glendale B Line. We would be maintaining all the turn lanes, we'd be maintaining the parking, we'd be maintaining the bike lanes. All we would be doing would be converting one of the travel lanes in each direction to a bus lane. But like I said, we'd be maintaining the turn lane so local circulation remains unaffected. And by centralizing buses onto Central, we think it's actually going to see some increased improvements on brand. Similarly, on Broadway, we're also proposing a lane conversion of the outside travel lane. We would again maintain all the turn lanes, we would be maintaining almost all of the parking, again, except for a couple of stalls where we're proposing stations. The sheroes would go away, but other than that, we'd be maintaining all the turn lanes so local circulation would be retained. And then here you can see a rendering of what it would look like at Glendale and Broadway. In this case, the bus is pulling into the curb, the bus lane is right up against the station, you can see the canopy, some of the public guard, some of the next bus signage that tells you when your next bus is arriving. It gives you a feel of how it would be more premium experience compared to the typical bus stop. So I also want to just quickly touch, based on our equity-focused communities, Metro is trying to do a better job of serving communities that have typically been underserved. So what you see on the map here, the gray areas are quarter, or sorry, half-mile station area, radii, and then where it's highlighted in blue are where we hit these equity-focused communities. And these are communities that are lower income or have more zero-car households or are more transit-dependent. And you can see we do a really good job of reaching a lot of those communities in Burbank and Glendale along Glen Oaks, as well as in central Glendale, and then as well as a little bit in Pasadena and North Hollywood. And it's not just about providing them with the transit services, it's about increasing their connectivity to the broader regional network by giving them access to the rail lines in North Hollywood and Pasadena. So as I mentioned, we're currently in the middle of a public review period for our draft environmental impact report. It was released on October 26th, and the comment period is open, and we recently extended it to December 28th. We've already held two virtual public hearings over Zoom, gave a brief presentation, and then let people give us their comments orally over Zoom. In addition to those virtual public hearings, we've recreated the experience of a typical community open house with what we're calling the virtual platform. It's available at knowhopassbrt.com. At that link, you'll find a virtual space with the project information all on boards like you would find at a typical open house, as well as project informational videos, direct links to the draft environmental impact documents, as well as a direct link to provide comments. So we've had to be pretty creative in reaching out to communities in a time where we can't literally go out to communities, and we're really excited that comments have already been flowing in pretty steadily, and we're excited to hear more. Any additional comments can be submitted at any of the contact information you see below. You can send us a letter, you can send us an email. We also have a phone line set up if you prefer to give us your comments over the phone. And then any and all information on the project can be found at metro.net/nohopassbrt. In terms of next steps, as I said, we're in the middle of key stakeholder briefings, doing this public review and comment period. Once that closes at the end of the year, we'll begin summarizing the comments, analyzing the comments, compiling them, looking at them, seeing what the community told us. And then we want to go back to the Metro Board in February or March of next year for them to make that final decision on the routing called the locally-preferred alternative or LPA. Then, once they've made that decision, we can finalize our EIR, respond to all the comments, and we hope to go back to the Board to certify a final EIR in early summer of next year. Our opening year per Measure M is 2024. So again, here's all that contact information. Any official comments should be submitted via one of these methods here, but I thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to take any questions you have now. Thank you.
Before, I would like, do we have any caller?
Mayor, not for this item, no.
Not for this, okay. Before I go to our Metro Board member and council member, I just have small comments to make. First, on the Glen Oaks, which you are showing the buses, maybe this is preliminary, but the bus door opens to the ongoing traffic. What, how are they going to solve that unless the bus is to have doors both sides? This is page 10. Page 10?
So as I said...
The door to the...
So let me jump in on that, Mr. Mayor. On Thursday, I'm putting forth a motion to the Metro Board, which would allow us to have boarding on both sides of the bus. So whether it's a curbside or a median side, there will be a door that's opened and not require someone to walk around the bus.
Okay, now, great, thank you. This is a great idea, but I just was driving today on Glen Oaks. We're around Highland and those streets on Glen Oaks, and the gas company eliminated one lane. And that was at 2:00 PM. And the traffic, the eastbound traffic, where one of the lanes, I mean, exactly the lane which is for the purpose of this bus going to be, the gas company was working, eliminated that first lane, which is to the median. And was at 2:00 PM, there was such a traffic in there, I can't imagine what will happen to Glen Oaks. As I said, I like the idea, I like the public transportation, but I cannot imagine that 5:00 PM or 6:00 PM or early morning, around 8, 9:00 PM, what's going to happen to just Glen Oaks Boulevard? I mean, it would be difficult from one traffic light to the next, the cars will be stopped. I mean, there will be no movement. I don't know if somebody can think about this and visit now when gas company eliminated under eastbound, one lane has been eliminated, number one lane where the bus should run. So you can see the impact of eliminating one lane. That this time is a good source to look at. Thank you. Mr. ...
Mr. Mayor.
First, I go to Mr. Najarian.
Mr. Mayor.
Metro Board Member.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Just, just wanted to mention that Metro staff have put together a really nice video clip that if we can show, it's about four to five minutes, and may answer some of the council's questions.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, Mr. Mayor. Let's, let's play that video clip and...
How about the traffic? They're going to show the today's traffic?
Well, hopefully, the point is that people who are going from Burbank to Glendale will jump on that transit rather than get in their cars. We can't rely on our cars the rest of, the rest of our lives. Is it playing? Hit the play button.
Right, they're trying to fix it.
Okay.
Where's that background noise coming?
There's a woman speaking. I don't know.
There you go.
Update you on our progress to date on the North Hollywood to Pasadena Transit Corridor project.
The area between North Hollywood and Pasadena is one of the most heavily-traveled corridors in LA County without premium transit service.
Metro has a plan to make it easier to get around, and that plan involves improving bus service. Along with efforts like our Next Gen Bus Plan to reimagine our bus network, we are also planning Bus Rapid Transit, or BRT, which is faster and more reliable than regular bus service. BRT can help us take cars off the road and serve neighborhoods that need public transit service the most.
Metro began studying routes for the project in 2018. We then moved into the environmental process and held scoping meetings in communities throughout the study area during summer 2019. In November 2019, we held community workshops where participants provided input on our environmental process and BRT design.
We're now releasing our draft environmental impact report, which evaluates the environmental effects of our project. The proposed project takes into consideration all the input we've received along the way, as well as findings of technical studies on various components of the project.
The project will feature a mix of dedicated bus lane configurations, as well as segments of the route where the BRT will operate in the existing general-purpose lanes, including freeway segments and throughout Pasadena.
The different types of configurations include curb-running, side-running, and center-running. Curb-running BRT runs in its own lane directly next to the sidewalk. Side-running BRT runs in its own lane alongside a parking lane or bike lane. Center-running BRT runs in its own lane either in the middle of the street or adjacent to a landscaped median. BRT operating in general-purpose lanes shares lane space with cars. This project will also include enhanced stations with passenger amenities, including seating, shade structures, bike racks, and real-time signage. We'd like to walk you through the proposed project from west to east, starting in North Hollywood.
Our route starts at the North Hollywood Metro Station, which is served by the Metro B Line, Metro G Line, and numerous other buses.
From there, the BRT will run along Chandler Boulevard before turning south into center-running bus lanes on Vineland Avenue, where a station will be provided to serve the NoHo Arts District. The BRT will then continue onto Lancashire Boulevard before merging onto the State Route 134 freeway. The route returns to the street in Burbank, where buses will run along the curb on Olive Avenue to serve the Burbank Media District and downtown Burbank while also providing a connection to the downtown Burbank MetroLink station. The route will then turn onto Glen Oaks, where buses will run adjacent to the landscaped median heading into Glendale. As the route enters downtown Glendale, the BRT will run along Central Avenue and East Broadway in side-running bus lanes and connect to destinations in downtown Glendale, including the Glendale Galleria and the Americana ad brand. Next, the BRT will enter Eagle Rock, where it will run in side-running bus lanes on Colorado Boulevard with stops to serve Eagle Rock Plaza and other destinations within the community.
Based on community input, we are also studying options in Eagle Rock that would have the BRT run in the center of Colorado Boulevard or on the SR 134 freeway. After intense studies and comparisons, the side-running option checked the most boxes on items of key input that we heard from this community during the public scoping process.
Heading east from Eagle Rock, the BRT will move onto the freeway at Linda Rosa Avenue and head into Pasadena, where it will exit at Fair Oaks Avenue and travel in general-purpose traffic lanes to Raymond Avenue, connecting with the Metro L Line and serving Old Pasadena before heading back onto Colorado Boulevard. It will then travel in general-purpose traffic to the route's endpoint at Pasadena City College. It's also important to note that in addition to the proposed project, a number of route options are also being studied along the corridor, including the Lancashire Boulevard option in North Hollywood, a Colorado Street option in Glendale, and 134 freeway options in both Glendale and Eagle Rock. In Pasadena, a Colorado Boulevard freeway exit option and Green Street-Union Street couplet route option are being studied. So what happens next? The proposed project and route options are outlined in our draft environmental impact report, released October 26, 2020, and will be circulated for public comment for 45 days, ending on December 10, 2020. During this time, we will be taking comments on the route and other components of the draft DIR.
In early 2021, this project will go before the Metro Board of Directors to approve the route, which, once approved, is known as a locally-preferred alternative, or LPA.
From there, we will prepare the final environmental impact report to go before the Metro Board in late spring of 2021 for certification. Our intent is for this project to open in 2024.
There are many ways to connect to the project. We will be taking formal comments by mail, email, phone, and on our website until the end of the comment period on December 10, 2020. We look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, this is the next big thing for Glendale, and it's going to be the closest we're going to get to a trend, a light rail. And it will connect us to the orange line, to the red line, and to the gold line, will open up Glendale to all the transit routes that currently exist in LA County, which up to this point, we've been deprived of connection to. So the question before us today is, do we have comments on which route we want it to go through Glendale? Personally, you know, many years ago, I thought the freeway route was best, just get it on the freeway and put the hammer down and get through Glendale. But as I've matured a little bit, I've realized that it is a much better route if it comes through our city, through either Broadway or Colorado. I have a, I have a favoritism towards Broadway. And then up Central and take Glen Oaks all the way out. We have, I mean, this is it. It's not a question of do we want it or not. It's coming, it's coming to Glendale, and I think we have to be very thoughtful and make comments as to what we think the best route would be. It's going to be an economic development tool, it's going to help our environment, get cars off the road, give people a chance to get around where currently they, they don't have that possibility. I've been working over 10 years on this with Metro, and it's not easy to get a project like this through. We're pretty lucky that there are other parts of the county that are still waiting for some sort of premium... that are still waiting for some sort of premium transit. Staff has been doing a great job at Metro. Glendale staff, Burbank, and Pasadena have all been working on this. So I hope we can embrace this and give Metro our thoughts as to what the best route configuration is, and encourage everyone to get out of their cars and onto transit. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is there any other comments?
Yes, I have some.
Mr. Button?
Yeah, I have various questions, comments. I mean, first, on that, the question of the 134, I'm not in favor of the freeway option. I think you have to bring transit to where people live. You need to make it convenient, or people won't use it. And I think it would fail if we had too much freeway, you know, if we lost the opportunity to have it go through the heart of the city and pick up and drop off people, you know, close to where they live. I don't know, you know, who's gonna go wait on the freeway? I guess in Pasadena, the Gold Line stops on the 210. And I hear, you know, pretty bad things about that. I think you take a tunnel, which probably smells like somebody slept in it and did some other stuff in it, or you take an overpass and it's, there's noise and there's pollution. I don't think anybody really enjoys getting on and off on the freeway. So that's one thing, my point of view. I definitely wanted to run through the city. A question on Glen Oaks and Central with regard to the bike lanes. I see there are bike lanes that run alongside either a traffic lane, in the case of Glen Oaks, or they run alongside the BRT in the case of Central, I think. Is that right? Yeah. And then you have a line of parked cars. The way I think some, you know, kind of more forward-looking transit, active transit people are going is to put the bike lane on the sidewalk side. So you've got the parked cars, then you've got your protected bike lane, which is naturally protected by parked cars, and then you have your sidewalk. And I know that's, I think near USC they do it, and there's some other places that do it like that. It makes it like, you know, if you have a little kid, I mean, you're comfortable with a little kid riding when they're riding between parked cars and the sidewalk, not when they're riding alongside fast-moving traffic or a bus lane. I think it would really open up ridership, and it's something I hope we can consider. I think the geometry on Glen Oaks should make it pretty straightforward. I'm not sure about Central, but I would like us to look at that. And I don't know if that's a micro question or if that's a Glendale, you know, public works question. But if we can't do that, I think we should really be running collards or some kind of, I don't know what you call those things, that protection between the traffic and the bike transit. So that would be a comment I have there. Let me just continue. As far as, as far as Broadway versus Colorado, just a question, did Metro run any kind of analysis on how it affects the timing, you know, end-to-end or between different segments going on one or the other? And how might it affect ridership? Was that part of the analysis?
We did do that kind of analysis. I believe Broadway and Colorado were comparable in terms of travel time. However, in terms of ridership, Broadway performs a little better, mostly because the land uses are denser along Broadway. And that is also where our current transit heading east-west is focused. So that reflects that the ridership is already there.
Right, and I like Broadway. I mean, we just had a conversation about affordable housing. We're gonna be putting up, what, 155 or 157 units of affordable housing right on Broadway? It'll be just, you know, great. And also, I think, you know, when you go back in history in Glendale, I think the Red Line had a, maybe Councilmember Najarian knows better, but I think the Red Line had kind of a, like an extender that went out to Chevy Chase. I've seen that on some maps. So Broadway does kind of fit with the historical fabric of the city. And I think I would prefer that. The one thing about Broadway that's a little concerning is, you know, we're losing those bike lanes. But those are just sharps, which kind of suck anyway. So I'm wondering if, and this is probably more of a Glendale thing, if we can look now at how do we replace that along, you know, Wilson on one side, maybe Harvard on the other? If we could kind of get some better bike infrastructure there? Because I think our pedestrian plan had us doing dedicated protected bike lane on Broadway, if I'm not mistaken. So if we're gonna lose that opportunity, we should look at parallel tracks on Wilson and on Harvard. And let's see, I think that's most of it. Just, you know, one other question is, I read, you know, an older, you know, it was kind of a Measure M report, and it talks about how, you know, potentially this project could open the door for rail service. If, says rail service at a later date if ridership demand outgrows the bus rapid service capability. I mean, what, has there been any discussion on that? Is that just pie in the sky? Or could this kind of open the door for us to actually get light rail coming through Glendale?
So as part of our mandate, we have kept that in mind. However, that is a very, very, very far in the future for sort of development.
Do you like apple or pumpkin, Dan? It's a long way out, and there's a lot of funds required.
Well, I'd like to keep that at being part of the dream, because I think, you know, a lot of people are, you know, they're kind of down on buses, right? And the dream of rail, I think, can kind of help with some of the excitement around this. So I'd like to keep the dream alive. Anyway, that's it for me, thanks.
Ms. Devine, do you have any comments?
Well, sure. First of all, I am against the freeway connection as well. I think we have to have connectivity, and that would only, and that would be counterproductive, I think, as far as Glendale is concerned. If we take it down Central, it goes by the Galleria, et cetera. My concern was, if our goal was to decrease the number of office employees coming to Glendale, why wouldn't we put this BRT on Brand? However, as I understand it, and I think you explained that as well, that this could ease the traffic on Brand. And, you know, it's only, I was also mentioned that it's only a block away, so it wouldn't be so bad. But you've hit on all of the, I think, the buzz terms, the important factors. Preserves parking, improves the flow on Brand, preserves bike lanes. That's very important, because we want people to get to use their bikes. I am in favor of Broadway because of residential and commercial diversity on that street. So I think that would work the best. I would request that in your stations that you have schedules, on their computerized schedules, so people know time leaving, time arriving, how long is it going to be before the bus gets here, that sort of thing. Even though you're predicting 10 minutes, you know, there may be some glitches in there at times. I had a question about the proposed project route in Southern Glendale. And you have on East Broadway, curb running on East Broadway before transitioning to side running. Now, how would that work? How does that work? It goes from curb running, which is right next to the curb, correct?
Yes.
And then it goes to side running, which is away from, besides parked cars, correct?
Yeah.
Can you explain that, why that's happening?
There's a brief segment of Broadway that's a little bit narrower, and there's currently no parking there. So we're proposing, since there's no parking, we're running adjacent to the curb. I think it's just because of the capacity right near Brand and Central. That's why Broadway is, that's why we have to be in the curb running configuration there. But then, once we move a little further away, the parking lane is returned, and we start running adjacent to the parking lane.
Adjacent to the parking. And that's a bus lane, right? That would be a bus lane?
Yeah.
Okay, so those are my comments, and this is exciting. And, you know, it's going to, most important thing is it's gonna provide connectivity to our city and other cities, and we have been asking for that and promoting that for so many years. It's just incredible. And hopefully, it will be efficient and convenient and work beautifully. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Councilmember Chris Harkin.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for this presentation. Thank you for all the work that staff has done and to Metro. It is exciting to see a project like this come to the city to help take cars off the road and to make people want to ride the bus. My question is, in terms of the route, I prefer the Broadway route. I think that there are many upsides to it. I don't like the idea of it going down Colorado, per se, at least. In the segments that were shown in the map, I think it could cause significant disruption. But why wouldn't the route continue along Broadway all the way to San Fernando and then go from San Fernando from the Glendale section to Burbank? It seems as though it's a relatively underutilized route and could move a lot faster than Glen Oaks can at sometimes. Because I know that as wide as Glen Oaks is, there are times of congestion, at least seasonally, along that route.
So I believe we did look at a portion of San Fernando as part of our alternatives analysis back in spring of 2019. But based on our coordination with the community and with the city of Glendale staff, as well as just looking at historic transportation patterns, Glen Oaks kind of rose to the top. It was a historic transit corridor. That's why the large median is there, because the streetcars used to run right up the middle of it. So I think the demographic patterns, as well as I said, all the coordination with the community, Glen Oaks really rose to the top as being a bigger draw with more ridership potential.
Well, I certainly hope that's the case. I don't know what it's going to take to necessarily get Angelenos out of their cars. I mean, Angelenos in the larger sense, and I include Glendale residents as part of that term. But I will be cautiously optimistic with this project and hope that it achieves its desired goal. I think that sometimes we come up with these routes and think that, you know, we have a Field of Dreams type approach, where if we build it, they will come. I have yet to see it fully realized in any of these projects, but perhaps it's just a matter of time. My consideration over, I think ultimately what gets people excited about transportation is convenience, and also how quickly it can get them there. One of the reasons people I know aren't utilizing the buses more in Los Angeles is because they feel they can get there faster in their cars. And I think if we put it on a route where there could potentially be congestion, it may be a deterrent rather than something that encourages more people to ride it. I mean, I've driven all these roads pretty much my whole life. I got my driver's license at the DMV on Glen Oaks. I know these roads backwards and forwards, and I know that Glen Oaks can get congested more than San Fernando can at times. But with that, I support the Broadway route, and I look forward to this coming to fruition.
Thank you. I guess, Mr. Najarian, do you have any more comments, or you're done? You're okay?
Mr. Najarian, you're muted.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Button?
Yeah, I did have like a question, just on that area. As you're going, you're going east on Broadway where, you know, it's what? It's, I know it's backwards. It's like East Broadway goes into West Broadway, even though you're moving to the east, right? So there's that triangle there, and I think as you're going eastbound, you're going kind of to the south of that triangle, and then probably going westbound. I think you're making a 90-degree turn above that little triangle. Do you know what I'm talking about?
I believe so, yes.
You're passing Glendale High School, and then as you're going eastbound, you kind of curve to the right, and you take that little side, that little side pass. And I think that's the way the BRT will go. And I think if I was thinking, when it comes back, when it's going westbound, I think it, well, it can't go that way, because that's one way. It'll go up, and it makes this weird little 90-degree turn. That whole area there, I think, and we're in mixed-flow traffic through that little section, and then as it comes down to the border of LA and where the two freeway is. That area, is that all? Can you just describe how that works? Is that mixed? It's kind of a little bit of a crazy area right there. People speed, and, you know, it's a little more difficult than some of the other parts.
All right, I'm just pulling up a map right now so I can get a better look at it. I believe we do go to mixed flow approaching the two due to capacity issues. We wanted to maintain flow near the freeway onramps. So that is an area where we would probably be in mixed flow for a brief segment. I'd have to take a closer look at our detailed plans to give you a firm answer on whether or not we're in bus lane configuration, excuse me, in a bus lane configuration near that triangle. And again, it would depend on which route option is selected. If it's Broadway, it would be different than if it was Colorado.
Okay, Colorado would make all that go away. That would only be a Broadway issue. But just as you kind of get to the edge of Glendale there, and you can go into LA, that area, you know, I'm thinking about a bicycle rider, you know, in that area, it's kind of dangerous and a little chaotic, and people are kind of speeding. And I don't know, maybe this is more for our staff, just to think about, is there something we can do there to kind of stop the traffic? So it's a little safer for people on their bikes.
Mr. Brown, those are good questions to ask for, as they review the EIR. Let's see, in that area for, as well as the traffic on Glen Oaks that the mayor originally offered.
Thanks.
Okay. I guess I start from the east. I would like to see the bus goes on Broadway, because we are going to have 167 units on Broadway close to Glendale Avenue. So Broadway, I think, is a better option. I don't want to go far from to San Fernando, because when you are in the middle, both sides of the road further down helps everybody. When you go to the very far, anywhere you go far, it will benefit, San Fernando may benefit also Los Angeles, which let them, they have lots of money, the city of Los Angeles, let them think about that and do it. So I'd rather be on Broadway if we have to, and will help that 167 families, which they're gonna be on our future building. And as far as, I would rather see Central than Brand. Brand is kind of a very busy street, so Central is better. But I have a problem with Glen Oaks. As I said, whoever wants the next few days to drive on Glen Oaks and see the situation when one lane is gone, I don't know how we're gonna solve that, unless we could have higher level, second level for the bus, so going over the median. Or we use that, which in the middle of Glen Oaks, there was, I guess, train was going on, right? And so maybe bus should drive right in the middle and not bother the traffic. Because as I said, I cannot imagine to drive on Glen Oaks with two lanes gone. Anyway, Mr. Byrne, thank you very much for coming, and hopefully, we'll see you again soon.
Mr. Mayor.
Take your free time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr.?
Mr. Calvert would like to share the next steps with council as we move forward.
Okay, Mr. Calvert?
Yes, Mayor, council members. As you heard, Metro has extended this comment period to the 28th. So what we are planning to do is take these comments this evening and incorporate that into a letter that will be in response to the draft EIR. We are also working with our consultant team. As you're aware, we are working on the West Glendale Sustainable Transportation and Land Use Study. And our consultant team has some questions and comments similar to what we've heard. And our consultant team has some questions and comments similar to what we've heard from some of you this evening regarding the bicycle infrastructure and making sure that that is creating a, a safe environment. So we will be collecting these comments, putting them together and then responding formally prior to the 28th.
Thank you, Mr. Calvert. Okay, now, okay, is this, we have to vote on it?
Yes, we have a motion.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll move the item.
Do I have a second? Okay, we have seconds, so roll call, please.
Councilmember Brockman.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item would be nine hearings, nine day community development regarding consideration of ordinance amending Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 and general plan amendment to the Downtown Specific Plan DSP relating to establishing standards and ministerial processes for reviewing and approving accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units, ADUs, junior ADUs zoning code amendment, case number PZC 2016760 and general plan amendment case number PGPA 2016755. One ordinance for introduction, amending Title 30. Two ordinance for introduction, amending the Downtown Specific Plan DSP. Mayor, we also have a caller on the line.
Okay, let's go to the caller, please. Is that okay?
Mr. I would.
Here's the item first.
Yeah, we should hear it from the staff.
Mr. Golanian first and then after they finish the report, we will go to the caller.
Mr. Mayor, member city council, I'm going to introduce Kristen Asp, our principal planner, who has a PowerPoint presentation for you. And I believe Ms. Yvette Nukin, our senior assistant city attorney, is also on the call for questions. Kristen?
You're muted. Yes, you are mute.
Yes, sorry. Thank you and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This item is an introduction of ordinances for permanent standards for accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units to replace the current urgency ordinance that is set to expire on December 9th of this year. Just by way of a little background about the history of ADUs in Glendale, dating back to 1996, ADUs or granny flats, as they were known at the time, have been prohibited. And that was, that prohibition lasted until most recently 2017. When state legislation required jurisdictions to have a ministerial process for the approval of ADUs. So subsequently in February 2017, city council adopted interim standards and then a permanent ordinance in January of 2018. That is, until again, a little over a year ago, in October of 2019, additional legislation was passed, amending more standards related to ADUs and JADUs. And on December 10th, 2019, council adopted the urgency ordinance with the, the current standards. So I'm going to generally cover what the state law says and then cover the differences between the current interim ordinance and the proposed ordinance before council tonight. The main components of, of the legislation really relate to the allowable zones, the development standards that are applicable to ADUs, outlines mandatory ADUs. There are four types, essentially two in a single family and two in multifamily and mixed use scenarios, as well as processing requirements and development impact fees. Quickly for the, the processing requirements, ADUs and JADUs must be reviewed ministerially. That means there's no discretion or hearing or allowed. We have 60 days to act on a complete application. This is, this is shortened from 120 days, which was one of the previous legislation. And if a completed application is not acted on within 60 days, it should be de-approved. So where ADUs allowed, in what zones are ADUs allowed? ADUs are allowed in all zones that permit residential uses. This includes family, multifamily, as well as mixed use and commercial zones. A city cannot require an owner occupancy for an ADU. This is a provision that sunsets in 2025, but any AD, ADU units built between 2020 and 2025 will remain exempt from the owner occupancy requirement. However, any owner occupancy covenants executed prior to January 1, 2020 are still enforceable and still carry the owner occupancy requirement. And as it relates to junior ADUs, the occupancy requirement is mandated. ADUs are, are permitted as a conversion of existing spaces. So this is not just for garages. This could be an existing pool house, cabana, rep room, a workshop, things of that nature. Jurisdictions are allowed to regulate development standards and include things like parking, height, setback, landscape, design review, maximum unit size, block coverage and the like. However, there will be exceptions to this in a few slides when I cover the mandatory These are images not in Glendale, but in other jurisdictions that just give a typical example of what a garage conversion might look like. As far as setbacks, an ADU, an ADU requires no setback for conversion of existing buildings. This is not just limited to existing garages. This could be conversion, let's say, of a back bedroom in an existing single-family house that has a non-conforming setback. Because it's conversion of something existing, there's no setback requirement. But a four-foot interior, interior setback is required for all additions and detached ADUs. And I want to make clear that four-foot interior means side and rear, interior side and rear of a lot. As far as size, the minimum size must allow for efficiency units and that is 150 square feet. And the maximum size is at least 850 square feet or 1,000 square feet for ADUs with two or more fragments. However, so this is what I looked at just a few slides ago, development standards for block coverage, open space and floor area review must be waived to permit new construction ADU, that is, 800 square feet maximum, maximum 16 feet in height and provides a four-foot minimum interior setback and side and rear. Again, some other images from other jurisdictions of what a typical detached new construction ADU might look like. Okay, so the next several slides, I'm going to describe the scenarios for mandatory ADUs. And they're represented to single family and multifamily. So to start with the single-family scenarios. And when, when we talk about single-family, that's defined as where there is only one unit or lot regardless of what the underlying zoning is. So this could be a single-family, a single-family dwelling in, let's say, a commercial zone or even a multifamily zone. So jurisdictions must allow one ADU and one JADU within existing or proposed single-family unit. A converted ADU may be within a single-family dwelling or an accessory dwelling, has to have exterior access, may allow an expansion of up to 150 square feet, but that is only when required to accommodate ingress and egress for the ADU. This 150 square foot provision is excluded specifically for junior ADUs and if the setbacks are sufficient for fire safety. I want to point out the "and" here, which is underlined, which is, I'll get to it in a little bit, but it's the result of AP3182, which will be effective on January 1st, 2021. But staff is proposing to incorporate this out since we're doing this. This was previously an OR, so it was one ADU or one junior ADU. It is now an "and". So what is a junior ADU? A junior ADU is only allowed on lots with a single-family use. So this is not eligible for multifamily situations. The JADU must be contained entirely within a single-family residence. It's limited to 500 square feet maximum. And again, one JADU per lot. As I mentioned, it's not eligible for the 150 square foot ingress or egress addition. And the occupancy is required for junior ADUs. And that means that a property owner can live in either the junior ADU or the main ADUs. This image is just used to give an example of, of where a JADU may be within the house with the new detached ADU in the back. And syncing up with single-family. In addition, an ADU can be one detached new construction ADU lot, where again, it's not on a lot with an existing or proposed single-family unit. Again, limited to no more than 800 square feet in size, 16-foot height limit, four-foot interior, which is the side and rear setbacks, and may be combined with a junior ADU in existing or proposed single-family house. These are some more images that show a detached garage conversion, an ADU that is converting an attached garage, an ADU that's converting part of the existing dwelling, or a new detached, new detached ADU where a garage was demolished to make room. Next to multifamily. And again, I define multifamily as when there are more than one unit per lot. Multiple ADUs in existing multifamily buildings must be allowed. This is conversion of space not used, is not used as livable, it is not with the ADU itself. Examples created like a storage room, a laundry room, a garage, that not the multifamily dwelling unit itself. It must meet all building code standards and you must allow 25% of the existing units in the building and one unit. So for example, if there is an eight-unit property, this site would be eligible for three ADUs. 25% of eight units is two plus the one. Or you get, you get two choices in multifamily or not more than two detached ADUs on a lot with existing multifamily buildings. These are limited to 16 feet in height, four-foot interior setbacks, and are limited to 850 or 1,000 square feet depending on the bedroom. Moving on to parking, the parking requirement for an ADU is one space per bedroom or per ADU, whichever is less. Must allow that parking in a tandem configuration. However, if an existing parking area is converted like a garage or carport or ADU, no replacement parking is required. However, no parking is required for ADUs in all of these situations. When it's within a half-mile walking distance of public transit, including bus stops, within an architecturally and historically significant district, that are part of the existing primary residence or converted accessory building, in areas where on-street parking permits are required but not offered to ADU occupants, within one block of a car share, of car share vehicles, and also when it's an AD, a junior ADU, and when it's one of the mandatory ADUs that I, that I just described. Some just additional limitations on, on mandatory ADUs. May not require the permission of any non-conforming zoning conditions as a condition of approval. No fire sprinklers may be required unless they are required for the primary residence and voids and CCNRs that prohibit or restrict the development of ADUs or JADUs. For impact fees, ADUs that are 750 square feet, that are less than 750 square feet, so a 749 square feet or less ADU, no impact fees can be collected. ADUs that are 750 square feet or more are charged proportionally in relation to the primary dwelling, the dwelling units or square footage. Connection fees and capacity charges, any ADU or JADU that's developed under the mandatory provision, no connection fee or capacity charge can be collected unless it's in conjunction with a new single-family house. All other ADUs that are non-mandatory, the connection fee or capacity charge is a proportionate burden of the ADU. So now I'm going to cover the differences between the current interim ordinance and the proposed ordinance. We briefly touched on this, AB33182 is, adds that "and", proposing to incorporate that now. And it allows an ADU with a JADU, whether that ADU is detached new construction or conversion of existing space. The next item relates to limiting the size of a new construction ADU when it's attached to the primary dwelling and limiting that to 50%. The current interim ordinance failed to include this provision and we're just adding that back in because it was left out in the previous version. So an example, 1,400 square foot single-family dwelling would be limited to a 700 square foot new construction attached ADU. The next proposal is to eliminate ADUs above a detached garage. This is largely due to the privacy concerns posed by neighbors in the massing of ADUs when they're located above a, above a detached garage. The current, the current ADU legislation does not require a city to allow accessory dwelling units above a detached garage. Along similar lines, we propose a limit of the size of balconies, porches and patios. Staff has reviewed many proposals where with unusually large amenities like these are out of scale with the ADU or the junior ADU. So the proposal is to limit to 5% or 60 square feet of the ADU or junior ADU, whichever is less.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a quick question?
Yes, please. Councilmember Brock.
Yeah, Kristen, I see you're changing this to eliminate ADUs above a detached garage. And for attached, for attached garages, is that already prohibited? I mean, our ordinance already prohibits that?
The, the proposed ordinance and the, and the current interim ordinance would limit ADUs to a single-story.
Okay, so across the board, detached, not detached, either way, we're disallowing those?
Right. Only if, only if there was an existing volume that was already two stories, something that already existed, could you convert to an ADU that could be two stories. Anything that's new would have to be, was limited to a single story.
Got it, thank you.
So these are just some, some examples from jurisdictions of ADUs above detached Next is a proposal for double frontage lots or through lots. And just to describe, a through, a through lot is a lot that has two street front setbacks. It's not a corner lot, which, a corner lot is a street front and a street side. A through lot has two street frontages, two street frontages that book on the property. Currently, new construction ADUs are not allowed on lots with this situation. And in the proposed ordinance, harves out an allowance for these lots to have an attached or detached construction ADU, only when they're located at the center of her facade to kind of protect that further street frontage and, and treat these lots in a similar fashion to lots without two street frontages.
And, and I have a question here as well, if I could.
Yes, Mr. Brock.
Yeah, so, so if, if I have a through lot, I can construct an ADU behind my house, but it still can be facing the street. What's the setback? Is it 25 feet?
Depending on the zone, could be 25 feet for an R1, could be 15 feet for an R1R situation.
Okay, but I could potentially build 15 or 25 feet in and across the street on the other side, I, it could be somebody's front yard, right?
Potentially.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll point out.
Because there's some controversy about that, so I'm sure we'll come back to that in discussion. Because there's some controversy about that, so I'm sure we'll come back to that in the discussion.
And next, for junior ADUs, we're making clear that junior accessory dwelling unit is only allowed within a single-family residence. The current interim ordinance allows within a single-family residence or a detached accessory building like a garage. But upon further review of the state law, determined that it specifically limits the location to only within the space of a single-family. Next is a limit of detached ADUs for multifamily lots that exceed the mandatory criteria. If you recall, the mandatory criteria allowed for detached ADUs and are limited to two. But in reading the state legislation, we found that it was silent about detached ADUs that were not part of this mandatory situation. And so while it's unlikely that many properties would have the capacity to add numerous, numerous detached accessory dwelling units in multifamily situations, staff is recommending a limit of three. And for the next, for the last thing I want to cover is to include a clarification in a revision specifically to E6 on page 33 and F5 on page 35 of the proposed draft ordinance. And this is something that staff discovered related to architectural compatibility. And we've double-checked it and want to make sure that we add in for the sentence to read accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units that, and add, "are new construction or proposed exterior modifications." So adding those four words, "are new construction or..." And similarly in F5, add to the first part of the sentence, accessory dwelling units that, and this is in the part, "are new construction or that proposed exterior modifications." When we took a second glance at it, we just really wanted to make sure that we covered all of our bases. So we're proposing that addition.
Chris, could you repeat, could you repeat that? Because I'm trying to find those in my.
Sure.
Board, I just, I'm at the.
So page 33?
I'm at.
Number 6.
35, 33, okay.
We'll start with that one, yeah?
5.
So in the first part of that sentence, and I'll read it, and then I'll pause to where we're going to add that language. Accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units that, here's the new part, "are new construction comma or proposed exterior modifications." So this would, this would cover all realms of ADUs, whether they're existing, whether that's conversion or new.
Okay, so that was, that's a kind of a step towards compatibility so that they don't look like they're just stuck on?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you. And the next one was on page 35.
Page 35, number five.
Number five, accessory dwellings.
Accessory dwelling units that, adding "are new construction comma or that." So consistent with the previous addition.
Yep, yep, okay, great, thank you.
Okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So next, I just want to point out that the planning and commission reviews, reviewed these proposed ordinances on November 4th and recommended approval. And staff recommends that council introduce the ordinances as drafted. Alternatively, council can decide to decline introduction of these ordinances whereby the interim urgency ordinance will expire, as I mentioned, on December 9. And Glendale would default to the state standards. Or council may consider any other alternative not proposed by staff of the planning commission. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Kristen. Kristen. Okay, we got two callers, I guess, so.
Sal, your live, Sal? Mayor, he just hung up. He's calling back again.
Okay, do we have only one call?
Just one call.
Okay, let's listen to Sally's.
Sal.
Sal, okay, let's listen to him.
Sal, your live, Sal, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. We're taking his call. Obviously, I'm calling in regards to ADUs. First-time caller in regards to this matter or any kind of matter in Glendale. Been here since 1983. Just wanted to, you know, the previous guidelines, not the proposed ones that I'm calling about, extremely ambiguous, confusing. And we feel like we're just sometimes going in circles. Maybe because it's new, which is very normal. At the same time, it's causing, you know, this confusion is causing a lot of friction with neighbors, definitely lots of stress. So we know it's not so much about the privacy anymore. Obviously, we have to follow the guidelines, and that's why kind of we're calling for, is how can we get a copy, for example, of what we just saw of this presentation or for the proposed one? How can we get something before that? And another question is, for the previous, for example, we have one that's building up three, four houses away from my house. What guidelines do they follow? And how does this, how does the new proposed, will that affect it or not? We're just trying to streamline this. So if we do think that someone broke the guidelines, if you will, who do we call? Again, you know, we have this email list that's going on for a while now. We're just trying to get ahold of somebody that can help us. Again, follow the guidelines, not so much to complain about them. Obviously, we want to be part of the solution. So we're just proposing to streamline the process in regards to the previous guidelines. And that's kind of what I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Gulanyan. Maybe you have to take his number and somebody speak to him if it's.
Yes, definitely, we can do that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, do we have the caller's phone number?
Sal, I'm going to put you on hold to try to get your phone number.
Thank you.
Sure.
You're welcome. Okay, I guess that was the only caller. So now we go to Mr. Gulanyan, do you have anything to add?
No, sir, staff doesn't have any additions.
Mr. Garcia? No. Okay, let's go to my colleagues. Anybody has any comments, questions?
Yeah, I.
Mr. Brat?
Just, you know, we've seen a handful of examples. For one from the Orlando Home Association, Kathy Yurka and a few others, pointing to the change we're looking to make up for through lots. So how do we address, how do we address the concern that ADUs will be built basically across the street from somebody's front, somebody's house? There's an ADU there, but that, you know, it won't go through any design reviews. You know, it could look like anything. And it could, it could, you know, really interfere with the, with the street. How do we, how do we address that?
Anybody wants to answer from staff?
Yeah, an ADU does have limited ability to have any kind of design review other than limited to some architectural compatibility for colors, materials. But that, that's about it.
So there's really, so that's, that's a concern. So if we were to not allow, if we were to not accept this one recommendation to allow an ADU on the, what would it be, on the side or rear of the, of the house on a through lot? Could, could the, could the owner still build? Are there, are there rules that say if there's no other way to build an ADU that have to allow that? Like, because those people can still build something that's attached, right? I'm just not quite sure how we get around this problem.
Currently, the only options for through lots for ADUs is conversion of something that's existing.
Okay.
But a through lot situation could also, is not prohibited from building detached accessory buildings that are not ADUs. That they could be a guest house, they could be a pool house, they could be something of that nature, and later could be converted to an ADU.
But they had to have a design review to convert, to build that, that other structure?
Some form of design review, yes.
And if I.
Ms. Divine?
Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm a visual learner. And so if I could see what, what the indications of this, this particular part of the ordinance would be, it would be helpful for me to make a decision. Because I was under the impression that, I guess the lot was on, in, on hillside that I went to see. That is not a through, a through lot, because it's a corner lot, and there's a difference.
Correct.
Billy was not looking at a through lot, I was looking at a corner lot. So, and you didn't present any drawings or projections of what the through lot ADU would look like. And that would be very helpful to me to make this decision. Because it is, it is, it seems to be a controversial one. And I would like to, you know, make the best decision I can. And I, and I feel like if I could see it, and I know city attorney Nukian sent out a great explanation of the setbacks, et cetera. But it was, you know, for me, it was difficult to understand. But yet, some of the people that are interested in this particular part of the ordinance would probably understand that, and, but, but they haven't gotten that information. So I, I wonder if we can just take this part of the ordinance aside and get this information out to people on exactly what the ordinance is saying and what it actually means with the setbacks, et cetera? Or is it, or am I the only one that just is, like, confused on this particular?
No, I'm with you, I totally with you. It'll help.
I would like to ask those, my colleagues or, I mean, city staff, if you are not talking, please turn off your microphone. Please turn off your microphone if you are not the person who's talking to us. Because there are extra noises.
That's better, that's better already. Thank you, thank you. And Mayor, if I, if I can, I think.
Yes, please.
I, I'm satisfied with the ordinance as staff has presented. I thank them for, for all of their work on this one. There was a question about, I think, allowing ADUs above garages in alleys. But I look at that as maybe opening a can of worms and it, you know, you're, again, you could be facing another property even if you're in an alley. So I'm not so sure unless some of my colleagues think that, that that's a good idea.
If I can add to that, Ms. Divine, the problem is you're looking at something, but tomorrow they may demolish and be another building. So if you are on top of the garage and nothing is in front of you, but we don't know like 10 years later, what's going to be the other side, so.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay. Any other comments from Mr.?
I would just like to maybe briefly address the issue in the through lot with Councilman Rotman and Councilmember Divine. Mr. Mayor, I think the issue is we, and we would be happy, by the way, that, that communication from Ms. Nukian may have to tweak it a little bit, but provide that response to the folks that commented on that particular provision. But as you can tell, the primary concern that we have is if you're not allowing owners of through lots to have a detached garage behind their house out of concern that it, you know, basically looks like another house on the other side of the through lot, that owners of through lots are not being afforded the same rights as owners of other lots. Not, in other words, not being able to have a detached ADU. And whether or not that that complies with the provision of, of the amended state law as was amended in 2019. So that's, I mean, that's the primary concern. We really don't have a way. There are, you know, as we've noted before, significant limitations in the state law that somewhat limit what we can do in terms of regulatory oversight of these. And so that's, that's the kind of, that's why the recommendation is being made to allow it, because it appears that the state law would require that. And then just the other thing, I think you already noted it on the, the issue of the ADUs above garages next to alleys. And it is, it is very difficult because the massing and privacy concerns might be the same. They might not be, but there is no, there's no mechanism that the city can impose to basically assess whether or not there's going to be an impact. It either has to, it has to unfortunately with the state law somewhat draw a bright line rule. You either allow them or you don't. And if the concern is about the privacy and the massing, and you want to ban them, then you have to ban them, we think, across the board. And you could certainly, you could carve out an exception for those that are behind alleys. But what, but if there's one that gets built that has a privacy or massing concern, you're not going to be able to do anything about it. And that's, that's kind of the impetus for that, that particular proposal, so.
So we can disallow any unit on top of the garage?
Yes, and that's the, that's the staff recommendation.
Yeah, but I just want to make sure that it's.
Yeah. Okay, so, so I have one more question for Kristen, I guess. In, in making these changes in the ordinance, the verbiage on page 35 and on the other page, 33, is that going to, to give the administrator, this, this, all of these decisions are ministerial on the ADUs? With that change in verbiage, is that going to give, let's say, the Director of Community Development or Planning or whoever is going to make the decision, is that going to give them the opportunity and the authority to make sure that the ADU that's being proposed is going to be compatible with the house? Because I think that's, that's a major concern, is the fact that people are just going to, you know, stick them on the house or do something crazy. Or that it would not look like it belonged with. Is that the intent of the verbiage?
That is the intent, but it is, it is limited to objective standards like colors, materials, roof form in relation to the, to the primary dwelling.
Yeah, that's, well, that's basically what I think is necessary. Because the pictures that you showed in your presentation of the ADUs, it was very obvious that they were exactly or very compatible with the houses that they were built behind. And I think that's one of the main criteria. And everyone says, well, they don't have to go to Design Review Board and there, you know, there is no telling what they're going to look like. But I want, I requested something in the ordinance that would give the authority, the Director of, as I said, Planning, Community Development, whatever, the authority to make sure that these are compatible and that they don't look like they were just stuck on the house. So I'm more or less satisfied with that. Correct?
Is that, Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
We can ask the property owner to go through compatibility on ADUs?
Well, what Ms. Ass was explaining, Mr. Mayor, is that there's a standard in the code that would judge that, there's not a process to go through, there's no discretionary process. It's just there's something in the code where you measure compared to colors and materials and roof form and that sort of thing. But it's not a design review like we typically have for, for new structures.
One more, are you done, Ms. Divine?
I am, thank you.
Thank you. One more question. When somebody wants to do some improvement or add a room or whatever, the neighbors, they get a notice, right?
Depending on the size of the project.
Let's say generally, they get a notice that what's, will happen in there. But for ADUs, nobody will know. The property owner can start doing and converting the garage to a dwelling unit or?
Well, they have to get their permit, but correct. There's no, there's no public hearing or public notice process for the ADUs. As far as I'm aware, that's right, Kristen?
Is that right?
Correct.
Yeah, because it's a ministerial process, so just like getting the building permit.
You wake up and you see something is gone next door to you, and you're basically unaware of it.
Unfortunately, that's the state law requirement, to treat it as a ministerial project, to treat it as a building permit, ministerial building permit, just like I'm getting a building permit to retile my floor, or redo my bathroom. It's the same, it's the same concept in the state's eyes. Obviously, we would disagree with that, I think all of us would, but that's how the state law was intended to be implemented.
Yeah. No, I'm just curious because changing the tile of your, inside your house, the neighbor is unaware of it, but to make, you know, dwellings and ADUs and JADUs probably will affect the neighbors. But I understand the state mandated that, so we can't say anything.
Mayor...
Okay, is there, yes.
I do have a caller on the line.
Okay, let's go to the caller.
Oh, it looks like it's, sorry, Mayor, it's for the next item, it looks like.
Oh, next item, okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Kusakian, Councilmember Kusakian.
I think it was Ara.
Ara.
No, that's not...
I'm sorry. Ara, please, go ahead.
So, Kristen, make this clear for me, because I'm still not comfortable with the concept that it's a, there's no discretion, it's got to be a ministerial approval. Let's say I live on a hillside, but I have a pad, and behind my house is a 100-foot slope, 200-foot slope. Am I entitled by right to build an ADU somewhere down on that slope? Detached?
Yes, as long as it's, as long as it's, if it's a mandatory ADU, it's not more than 800 square feet, not taller than 16 feet in height, and no closer than four feet to an interior property line.
So, our hillside design guidelines and all that are out the window?
Essentially.
Isn't that awful?
That's, until you get over 800 square feet. Okay, so under 800, you've got your four-foot setback. There's no requirement for vehicular access. You don't have to have a driveway that goes to the door of the ADU, right?
No, no.
You could have steps, stone steps that lead down with a little rope, a little rope balustrade that takes you down there. And the neighbors have no say on that, right?
If it snows, it will be easier to get down from...
Right, sledding down, right. Okay, okay, that's, I mean...
Just a quick interjection there. There must be some health and safety filter that we can put on it, no? I mean, if it's on, you know, I mean, if it's an unstable hillside or if it's some kind of fire issue, no?
All life safety issues would apply to the ADU, so...
Yeah, they have to comply with the Building and Safety Code, and if, for whatever reason, they couldn't comply with that because of the steepness or the soil condition, then maybe that would be basis to deny it.
Okay, so there...
Yeah.
I mean, they have to provide a geotechnical report showing that the ground is stable? And who would, who would check up to it?
Would go to Building and Safety, and we would check it with their plan. Again, depending on the condition of the site, we would or would not need to. If they got to put a retaining wall or something in, we'll get a soils report.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, if they put retaining wall, then they have to get permit?
If, yes. If they can put the retaining wall there, you know, it depends on where it is on the property. But yeah, the retaining wall, if you're holding back the slope, you'd have to get a permit for it.
No, but if he puts retaining wall, they have to get permit. But if don't look for retaining wall, they then don't have to get permit. That's worse even.
Well, again, it depends on where it is on the site. Are they doing some grading? If they are, we would ask for soils report.
No, but I'm trying to understand. If they come forward for that retaining wall, they come to you, but if they don't ask for retaining wall, then they do whatever they want, right?
They still have to come to us. They still have to go through Building and Safety for the building itself. The question was, if it's on a hillside, can they get a soils report?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know. This is kind of, I guess, in the long run, we're going to have some sort of problems in the future with buildings. Anyway, is there any other question, or we want to move to the item?
I'm still confused about this whole thing around through lots, and I'm hearing a legal point of view. We think if we don't allow it, there might be a problem with state law, but that sounded a little bit blurry. And we have some design discretion, but it sounds like it's with colors and materials and roof form, that's all it is. Do we really, I mean, do we really have to add that part of this right now? Can we try to understand a little bit more about what the little issues are and come back to it? Because I just, I'm still uncomfortable with it. I don't feel like I have a good grasp on what the implications are, and we can and can't do.
Perhaps we can do this. Councilman Rotman is introduce it with the change. We will write a little bit more detailed legal memorandum to the council between now and adoption for the council to be able to digest. But long story short, our view is that it would seem to be impermissible to not allow owners of through lots to have an ADU, a detached ADU. But we're happy to explain that a little bit in more complete detail. And then the council can make the decision when it actually comes back for adoption, whether or not to leave that in or take it out.
And we will provide, we'll provide diagrams for you for visual learners so that you have a better idea of what we're talking about.
If a week from now, the ordinance comes for the vote, and we want to take it out, we have to reintroduce, and then we're past this December 8th or 9th deadline, and then we get into a whole big mess, right?
I think that that...
The wire.
Taking out that particular provision would be, you can make changes between introduction and adoption that are germane, and that's the language in the charter, and it's kind of a, it's not, it's more of an art than a science, but essentially, it's just within the scope of the subject area that you're regulating, and it's not too far afield of what was originally intended, then you can make that change. In my view, and we'll take a closer look at it, but in my view, you'd be able to make that change at the time of adoption.
And we wouldn't have to go through this whole thing again, or go back to the Planning Commission or anything like that.
We'll look at that. But again, we're only at introduction anyway, so it's up to the council how you want to go forward. But our view is to go forward with it tonight with the introduction, and then the council can make that decision next week upon adoption.
Okay. I mean, my only concern is that we're up against the wire, right? We have one more meeting, then this thing expires.
Correct.
We haven't been left with really much time to deliberate this, which is kind of frustrating. So, I don't know.
And also, Mr. Garcia, explain to public, if we don't adopt it, then what will happen? What's the downside?
Correct. The reason that we're on the timetable that we're on, Mr. Mayor, is the council adopted an interim ordinance last year that expires on December 9th, correct? And we've been, you know, going through the process, getting the thing, going to the Planning Commission, coming back, and, you know, the interim ordinance expires on December 9th. So, if that ordinance expires, and then we wouldn't have any ordinances on the books after December 9th. So, that's why we're proposing adoption by December 8th.
And Mayor, I have a question, if I may, about the pipeline project.
Ms. Devine.
Yes, thank you, about the pipeline projects. Is there any way that we can put a hold on any projects that are currently, well, not permitted, but have just come in and say, we're not doing any of these until after the new ordinance passes? Because in the ordinance, it says, upon the day of passage, then the next group of ADUs and permits will go according to the new ordinance. But I'm asking if we can put on hold right now until we pass this.
We have, we have applications in right now. The council can either allow pipeline status like we have before. So, if you have submitted an application, you go by the old rules, or you get your choice, go by the old rules. Or the council could say, we don't have any pipeline. You did not pull your permit before the adoption, you got to start all over again. And if you don't want to allow any of those that are in the pipeline right now, that would be the way to do that.
How many would that impact again, Phil? How many permits are we talking about?
There are currently 265 ADU applications in Plattechak.
Wow.
200? Wow.
We don't know. Many of those would comply with the new code. So, it isn't that they're all something else.
Well, that's why I wanted to see if we could put these on hold, so that just because of the above garage, you know, the detached...
So, we can make, Ms. Devine, if you can make, you know, only to hold the, above the garage with new rule, maybe we say, if there is anything in pipeline that talks about having unit on top of the garage, we can hold those and go ahead with the new rules? And go ahead with the new rules, Mr. Garcia?
We, there are, the applications are there, and this ordinance is going to be, you know, depending on what you do. If you adopt a pipeline, then those that are in the pipeline will be allowed to go forward. If any of them beat the clock and they get vested and get a permit, they'll be able to go forward. Right now, it's a ministerial process, subject to the ordinances that are in effect today. Staff would have to, is processing them in accordance with that. There might be some that are up against the timeline, but, and they'd have to be processed accordingly. But the council can't give direction right now to hold applications. The staff will process them in the ordinary course, but I'd imagine, unless there's a timeline, there's going to be a hold, there's going to be a process by which they're going to wait to see what the council does on these.
Ms. Devine, do you have anything to...
Yeah, no, I'd just like to hold the permitting processes for a week.
I understand. What I'm trying to say, I'll just say, we can't do that tonight. We don't, you lack the authority to do that tonight, but I...
But we don't have the authority tonight?
Yeah.
When we're going to have it? Next week?
Next week.
Well, you don't ever have the authority to tell, to direct when applications be held and decided. You set the rules, and then those rules are implemented in accordance with the code. So, what I'm suggesting is just let this process play out, and then staff will adjudicate those applications under the new rules, if indeed you adopt this ordinance.
Okay, okay. All right. I'm satisfied with that.
Anybody wants to introduce the ordinance?
We haven't heard from Mr. Kusakian.
You all beat me to all the questions. I had the same question about corner lots in the past. The only thing that is left to say is that the state has done this again. They keep imposing this. This is not something, I hope the community realizes, and I don't know if they will, I think unfortunately, the blame will always come on local officials because these are local issues, and when people are upset, we're going to be the targets of their ire. And I wish it was different, but it feels as though, you know, to put it simply, the decision is made in Sacramento to destroy or kill off single-family neighborhoods, and we're simply being asked to pick the flavor of the poison pill we have to swallow. And that's this exercise that we're going through. So, I won't relish this, but, you know, if it takes someone to introduce this, and we somehow blunt the blow by putting in our own local guidelines as best we can, I'll make the introduction. But I'll tell you that this is not a vote that I'm looking forward to making or relishing being on this council when we introduce this. I hope that our elected leaders are listening to us, our leaders in Sacramento, to hopefully try and roll this back and give us more local control to determine our own futures. And I also should say that I realize that we are in a housing crisis. I mean, everyone sees the homeless population staying, it doesn't seem like to be going away. I don't know if this is a solution.
Mr. Kusakian, you want to introduce them?
I did. I will be the one to fall on this sword, at least for the introduction, so we can move it forward.
Is there a second?
It doesn't need a second, Mr. Mayor.
No? Okay. We are done with this then?
Yes, unless there are any further comments, the item has been introduced.
So, do we...
We can move to the next item, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, next item. All right. So, we are done with this. Okay, thank you for all those. And Kristen, thank you very much.
And just for the record, we will treat both ordinances as having been introduced. It's just...
The vote has been introduced. Sorry. Next item, please.
Community Development regarding appeal of Design Review Board's approval of DRB case number PDR 191858141226 Vista Court, continued from 11/17/2020. Motion to sustain the Design Review Board's decision and approve the project. Two motion reversing the Design Review Board's decision, continuing the matter to December 1st, 2020, and directing the city attorney to prepare findings, reversing the Design Review Board's decision and denying the project. Three motion to remand the project to Design Review Board for consideration.
Mr. Golany.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, as you recall, this item was continued from the previous meeting. I suggest that perhaps you can ask if you'd like to hear the item tonight, or if there's a request to be continued again before I turn it over to our senior planner for the PowerPoint.
Mr. Rotman, are you going to say something?
Can I just, can I just add on to what Mr. Golany said? So, you do have a request from the appellant to continue the item further, and I'm not sure if the applicant is ready to speak to that. Just for the record, the appellant was certainly noticed when this hearing was going to be, both the original date last week and then, or two weeks ago, and then tonight's meeting, but has indicated that she will not be able to attend telephonically or via WebEx or to participate in the hearing. So, the council has a few choices under the municipal code. If I could just pull it up. So, the municipal code says that the appellant has the burden of proof, so the appellant is not the applicant, the appellant is a neighbor. And then, where it appears that an appellant was served with notice of hearing but fails to appear either in person or by council, or fails to present or offer evidence, the council may adopt a determination or approve the act of the board, commissioner, officer, or it may itself decide the matter upon the record with or without taking any additional evidence. So, what that means is you can continue the item, you can hold the hearing and then decide what to do, or you can just make a decision based on the record you have before you without actually taking any additional testimony or whatnot. My only advice I think I would offer is, if you're going to, if you want to go forward and make a decision, at least have a hearing and hear from staff, and I think there's only one speaker on, or continue the item. But even though the county court code grants you the authority to have, make a decision without taking any additional evidence, my recommendation would be not to do that, just so you can hear the staff presentation.
I also...
Mr. Golany.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, as I indicated last time, I also like to mention that the appellant has indicated that she won't be available until after December 18th, which means the next available council meeting that we can hear, you can hear this, this item will be January 12th of next year, two months from now, more than two months from now.
Why we don't go ahead and listen to the, what we have on hand, and then we will decide? Because I see there is a gentleman here, Mr. Sean Briskie.
He's the applicant.
Oh, applicant is here, so maybe we can listen to him too. I mean, even if we have to postpone, we better listen to...
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Kusakian. Yes, Mr. Kusakian.
I, I voted to have this continued for one week because my hope was that during that time, staff could have had both parties come to an agreement that, for a date that was mutually agreeable. The staff telling us that that did not happen, that they could not agree on a date. I know that Mr. Garcia or, and Mr. Golanyan have said that the next possible time this could be heard is in January. I believe you mentioned, let me look at this calendar. You said January 12th. That they can be available on January 12th?
Councilman Kusakian, the appellant has noted that she will not be available until December, after December 18th. She's on a set of a TV show and the earliest that she will be available is right after December 18th. But we don't have any council meetings after the 15th of December.
I understand that, but I mean, if, if the next time it can be heard is on January 12th and we don't have confirmation from both parties saying that they can be available for them, then I understand options that are available to us, but it would seem a little unorthodox if we have, in, in my memory, and maybe Councilmember Najarian or others could chime in. I can't recall a time we've had a hearing with one party not present.
I don't remember.
I, I don't remember that, but it, I mean, she's, she's certainly entitled to have representation and have someone present the case for her.
But what happens to be connected through Zoom or some other means, you know?
Mr. Mayor, yes, staff has offered that up to the appellant.
Oh. Okay, how about if you listen to the applicant, Mr. Sean? I forgot the last name.
Mr. Briskie. So do you want to open the hearing or do you want to?
Let's, listen to him, at least he is here, let's see what he has to add to this conversation.
Just procedurally, if I may, I, if, if you're going to open the hearing, that would be one thing. If you, it would be appropriate, for sure, to allow Mr. Briskie to speak to whether or not he's amenable to continuing this, if he's okay with talking January 12th.
Maybe I ask him to see what he has to.
Yeah, that's, that's appropriate. Without opening the hearing, I think you can make that inquiry and see where, where he is on that.
Okay, Mr. Briskie.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
I, I've waited, it's, it'll be next week, it'll be five months this appeal was originally filed. And you know, this really is turning into a, you know, kind of a burden for me. You know, I'm, I'm really, ideally, you know, I would like to start, the best time to start construction is in the spring, you know, right after the rain stops. And if this keeps, you know, being delayed, then I obviously won't be able to do that. So the, you know, this is a problem for me. And like I said, it's taken five months to get to this point and it just seems like it, it keeps on being delayed. So no, I would not be in favor of any more delays.
All right, thank you, Mr. Briskie.
Mayor, I also have a caller on the line.
Okay, let's listen to the caller then. I'm sorry, hold on, Mr. Garcia.
I was going to say, if you want to let the caller just to speak on the issue of the continuance, because you haven't, we haven't opened the hearing yet, so not to speak on the merits of the case itself.
So only, only about delaying or not delaying?
Correct.
So the caller should limit the, you know, statement to whether to delay this hearing or not to delay, please. So let's go to the caller.
Rondi Warner, Rondi?
Yes, it's the same thing, Mayor Agajanian, City Council Members.
Rondi Warner, I have, Rondi, this, this comment that you can make is only to either extend it or you don't want to extend the actual hearing.
Yes, I'm only commenting about the scheduling of the, of the hearing.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
Yes, yes, I'm actually a little perplexed as to why the hearing was continued to December 1st when the applicant, or the appellant, Ms. Wilcox, had already made it clear to staff that she wouldn't be available until after December 18th. I understand there was some desire to reach out to her, see if she could Zoom or something like that. But as she had mentioned also previously to staff, she does film shoots, these continue on into the night. Because of COVID, you can't recreate evening conditions indoors, you actually have to be outside at night. So it's all, you know, because of COVID. Nonetheless, a public notice went out setting the appeal for November 17th and at that meeting was continued to December 1st, which was still sort of her availability date. And during that meeting, I questioned why the appeal was being scheduled with no regard for the applicant, or appellant's availability. The response was that staff is trying to balance the needs of the developer with the applicant. But where's the balance when appeal can be scheduled when only one side can participate? And where's the balance when the appeal was in fact expedited by four weeks compared to the other pending DRB appeal here in Adams Hill? And where's the balance in refusing to make reasonable accommodations during a pandemic when Ms. Wilcox had patiently waited for the appeal for months prior to being called back to work in September? This appears to be a procedural failure that goes beyond a specific case. Issuring a public notice without regard to the availability of both the aggrieved party and the applicant is just bad public policy and should be reevaluated for the future. But in the meantime, we respectfully request again that the hearing be continued to the first available date after December 18th. The council members that voted to continue this to December 1, it was on the understanding that they were going to check back with the appellant on her availability, not to actually hold the hearing. And to hold the hearing when there's lots of people who would like to speak, you know, I myself was planning to speak and I'm not prepared to do that at this moment, neither is anyone else, would seem like a real miscarriage of process. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, now, would we do that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Brotman.
I, I mean, last, last meeting when we discussed this, I, I didn't want to continue it to, to today because we knew that the appellant was not going to be available today. And I think what Ms. Warner says is correct. The idea was that we were going to find another date that worked for both parties. I think it would be very, you know, unusual apparent, I guess. And, and just, I'd be very uncomfortable participating in this with only one side present. So I would like to make a, a motion, if, if that's the right way to do it, to continue this to January 12th. It's not two months from now, it's one month and 11 days or something like that. And I think that's what we should do and have both sides present and have a, a good, robust hearing. So that would be my proposal.
Mr. Mayor, my, my question, I think, still remains unanswered, which is, did staff find a time or a date other than today as to which is agreeable to Mr. Briskie as well as the appellant?
I think the answer was there was no date that was acceptable to both parties.
How can that be?
Because the appellant wants to go on January 12th and the applicant wants to go right away.
Period.
How about if we do two weeks later and try to get?
That won't work. I, I, you know, you, my, my suggestion is you move forward the hearing tonight or push it to January 12th. You're not going to, you're going to, frankly, you're not going to make one side happy with this. I don't, we, we, we've tried numerous times to get the date that works for both parties. And it's, unfortunately, this is, there, there's not an agreement. There's no meeting of the minds on this.
Can I, can I say something, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Brotman.
I'd like to be heard too.
I, I guess the question is, can Mr. Briskie make it on January 12th? Because I don't think it's about what you, what the parties necessarily want, but what's, what's doable. So is January 12th doable for, for both parties? Because if it is, I would say we continue to January 12th.
Before Mr. Najarian, Councilmember Najarian.
Yeah, I have a thought on that. I mean, Mr. Briskie is entitled to his, to his day before the council and it has been five months. And I received an email, I think you did too, saying that at nine o'clock, the appellant is going to be free. So it's almost quarter to 10 now, why can't she pick up the phone? Why can't she Zoom? Why can't she have a representative speak for her? Like Rondi Warner appears to be carrying the ball for the scheduling issue. Why can't she hire a representative to do that? This is, I mean, we're just, we're, we're playing games here, you know? I have, I have never, Mr. Kusakian asked me, have I seen this before? I certainly haven't seen a three or four times continuance without the consent of both sides. I mean, let's get this on, we'll hear from, we'll hear from staff, we'll hear what her appeal was based on, she had to put it in writing, it's for the record, let's go for it. I got an email saying she's done at nine o'clock. I don't know what you guys got that.
I didn't get that.
I didn't get that.
You didn't get that, saying that she works, by the time she's all done, it's nine o'clock and she's, she's free? Am I the only one who got that? No. I don't, no.
I mean, while ago, I guess I read that, but I'm not sure, I don't want to say.
She sent me today or yesterday or?
I want to, not yesterday, maybe I didn't look at. I mean, I want to, again, go with a compromise, maybe we do it two weeks later, but in December. So and we'll ask the appellant to make the time and do it.
Mr. Mayor, the appellant has noted that she will not be available, I think it's been said.
After she learned that this is the only choice, like two weeks later, then maybe she will try to find the time.
And that's one option, certainly, Mr. Mayor, you can continue to the 15th and direct her to either have her, her representative come and present her case for her.
May I quote from the letter? I projected for Tuesday, December 1st is 9:00 PM. That would be the time we conclude shooting and finish wrapping up for the day. Okay? Pick up the phone like we're doing, we're all remote. I mean, I think she's taking advantage of the situation. It's almost 10 o'clock, she should be able to call in, get her phone and Zoom in like we all do. This is ridiculous.
I, I understand that this has become, Mr. Mayor, I, I apologize if I can speak. I understand that there's frustrations on all sides and certainly Mr. Briskie has, is entitled to be frustrated in having his project delayed. However, I don't see what significantly or realistically would be the harm in having this heard on January 12th, having a final, you know, have a hearing from all parties and, and being done with it. I mean, ultimately, we're going to have to hear this. And I think that if we were to delay it, as you would suggest, for two weeks, when we know that at least the appellant would not be available, and then we have to delay it one more time to a date certain, is, is going to make us look bad, is going to make staff look bad. I think ultimately, the right move would have been for us to have found out, you know, when is the appellant ready? If they're ready, January 12th, then that's the date we, we move it to. We apologize to Mr. Briskie for having one more month of delay. But I can tell you, certainly, there are stories in the city of people having their projects delayed much longer than that, not that that makes it right necessarily. But this is not something that we have, we're, we're going to be listening to this as almost a de facto hearing or a type of court case. We're not taking anyone's side on this. I certainly haven't made up my mind either way, I just want to be able to hear from all sides. And I think that's only fair to, to ask of, of us and of the appellant and of the applicant. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to continue this to date certain, January 12th, no other changes. And at that time, you know, if the, both parties can be there, we want to hear from them. If not, then, you know, that's it, three strikes and you're out. We're going to go move, move ahead with it regardless. But that was my understanding in, in delaying this at least a week was to find a time that's mutually agreeable to both parties. That was it. Not to game the system, not to have delays any further. So if January 12th is that date, then we do it January 12th.
So you want to introduce the motion?
I mean, I think that motion, yes.
That's his motion with, and it would be with no further public notice.
Well, before we go on it, I'd like to enter into the record the email I received from inge@mindspring.com regarding the appeal. Apparently, the appellant says that she's going to be wrapped at 9:00 PM, noting that the time right now is 9:45 and that we're all remotely participating in this meeting. Two of you are in the, are in the room, the rest of us are out. So that's my problem and, but I want that to go on the record.
Thank you, Mr. Councilmember Najarian. Anyway, we have a motion and we have a second, I guess, do I have a second?
Can you repeat the motion?
Yes, we are postponing this hearing until January 12th of 2021.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, roll call, please. Mr. Garcia, is there anything to add?
No.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
No.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Okay, Mr. Briskie, I'm very sorry for this, but we will hear your case in January 12th.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for understanding.
Yes, yes, okay.
No questions asked after that. January 12th or not.
What's next on the agenda?
Oral commu-, oral communications is limited.
Do we have any calls?
We do, we have one caller.
Okay, let's listen to our callers.
Gilbert Hagopian, Gilbert, you're live, go ahead.
Yes, hello, Honorable Mayor, City Council and City Staff. My name is Gilbert Hagopian and I have actually two comments to make. One is, one is that I would like to show my support for Mr. Golanyan and I would really like to see him and to be our City Manager. And my second comment comes from the previous three calls that were made. And one of the gentlemen actually mentioned Assembly Bill 1356, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, correct, 1356. So I did, in the past hour, I had the opportunity to look over it and what I saw was really concerning. I mean, just to put it out there, I'm not for cannabis and I'm definitely not against it. But as a local Glendo resident, I would honestly say that I rather see one dispensary than see, I don't know, 15, 16, if their math was correct. 16 dispensaries in Glendo, that's really terrifying. And just keeping in mind that on Thursday, the House is going to vote on, I don't know, legalizing marijuana federally. It said that Assembly Bill 1356 is going to come up somewhere in February 2021. And again, that's just really terrifying to think about that in my city, I will come across anywhere from 15 to 16 dispensaries. So I would urge the City Council to please, please, please consider agendizing this topic. And, you know, just limit our dispensaries to only one dispensary or two dispensaries, whatever, anything is better than 15 to 16 for the safety of our children and our families. And, I mean, that's, that's all that I have to say. And I hope you guys, you know, continue doing the great job that you guys have been doing throughout the years and keeping our city safe and keeping us still the dual city. That's about it, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Hagopian, thank you very much. Next caller, please.
Mayor, there are no more callers, the next item on, on the agenda is adjourned.
Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn if, unless you guys want to stay here for longer?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, with that said, this meeting is adjourned at 9:46 PM. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.